Okay, good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of January 9th, 2023. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address, that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. After all, whoops, on the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda, for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today is a reminder that due to the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, the city council will not meet on Monday, January 16th, 2023. Next, we will have the Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the council, Madam Clerk. I'm really pleased to be back before you again to share another positive story about one of our teammates here at the City of Lincoln. I am here to present the Mayor's Award of Excellence for October 2022 to Zachary Becker, who is a senior engineer in our Lincoln Transportation and Utilities Department. And he was nominated by Assistant City Engineer Erin Sokolick in the categories of Customer Relations, Productivity, and Safety, for his work to successfully manage the completion of emergency repairs to storm drainage structures. During an inspection of storm drainage structures last June, a team at LTU discovered that two pipes had separated under the really busy intersection of South 56th Street and Old Cheney. And as a result, the soil between the pipes and the pavement had eroded, destabilizing the foundation below and that below ground and that supports the streets and the railroad tracks above. So it was a pretty hairy situation. Zach quickly engaged multiple stakeholders to determine how they could make immediate repairs to the intersection and address more permanent, longer-term solutions. And as the group worked towards those permanent solutions, Zach coordinated with LTU's Communications and Traffic Engineering Teams to adjust the timing of traffic signals and inform residents of temporary link closures. He also worked with the Omaha Public Power District, who owns the railroad line running through that intersection, to ensure that they were involved in the decision-making process. His strong relationship with a company specializing in soil stabilization prompted them to quickly relocate from a job site that was in another state. And during the week-long closure of the intersection, Zach worked extensively with our city communications team to keep residents and business owners informed, and he responded to their questions rapidly. And ultimately, the technology the company used to make the repairs both faster and less wasteful, since they were done without removing and replacing the existing concrete at the intersection. So as a result, at the intersection of South 56th Street and Old Cheney Road, it was reopened one day ahead of schedule. And in helping to ensure such great work for the safety and stability of our streets, Erin Sokolick praised Zach for his, quote, "impeccable leadership, coordination, and communication skills," as well as his dedication to doing what is best for the citizens of Lincoln. And she also thanked him for accomplishing, quote, "so much work in such a short period of time for the good of our community," which is, of course, why we're here to celebrate him today. And I hope you will all please join me in congratulating Zach Becker for his devoted and resourceful work. Zach, will you come up and accept your award?
Yay!
Invite Erin to say a few words about her nominee.
Yay!
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for giving us this opportunity to speak today. I first met Zach in 2012. He was an inspector on the Downtown Rehab Project. I was in traffic at the time, so I didn't work with Zach directly very much. But in 2013, I moved to Design and Construction, where I was a project engineer, and Zach had moved up from inspector to a project manager. And Zach was the project manager on my very first street rehab project, 33rd Pete Vine. Zach was an excellent project manager. He kept the citizens informed. You know, there's an elementary school on the southeast corner of 33rd and Vine. They had summer programs, so it's very important that we kept in contact with them to keep them into the loop of what was going on. We replaced the signal at Vine, so we had an electrical contractor on site, in addition to the paving contractor, marking replacement. So there's a lot going on and to manage. And with the help of that inspector on that project, Zach handled it. In fact, he made my job super easy. The reason I bring this up is because while we are here today to thank Zach for his work at 56 and Old Cheney for safety, productivity, and customer relations, Zach was doing these things nearly 10 years ago, because this isn't just a one-time thing for Zach. It's who he is as a person. It is the thought, detail, and effort that Zach gives to everything that he does. The city is very fortunate to have Zach as a team member, and I'm very fortunate to have worked alongside him from an inspector to now being a senior engineer who oversees our bridge management program. I want to congratulate Zach on his work at 56 and Old Cheney, but I also want to thank and recognize him for the work that he does every day.
Thank you very much. I don't have a lot, so hopefully it'll go quick. Thank you again to the mayor for continuing to do the Award of Excellence. I think this is a wonderful thing. I'm very appreciative that we have this available to us, the city employees, because as public employees, we don't often get a lot of chances to be recognized beyond just what we do and getting a paycheck. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you to the council for all your time for letting us do this every month, you know, whenever we get these awards. So I do appreciate that. Thank you again to Erin. That's very nice of you. I very much appreciate you taking the time and feeling this was deserving of some recognition. Mostly, though, like Mayor said, and, you know, there were so many people got involved with this project very quickly. So I just, I did my part, and that's what I get to do with the city, and I'm very happy and fortunate I get to do that. I think we figured there were over 75 people that we brought together. We did work very rapidly in about a week's time. Multiple departments, different agencies, other governmental agencies, you know, our contractors, again, multiple contractors that we brought together. And it was definitely a team effort. These kinds of things, they're just, this is a team effort. This is how this kind of stuff happens. So I'm very appreciative of those people as well, who we helped and we jumped in and we did something great. So, a few things, maybe a few more thanks, you know, the team I have, Erin and everyone else I work with, there's almost everyone's here in the second row and a few, a couple of us in the back row back here. You know, it takes a team. In the city, it always takes a team, and I'm so fortunate that I belong to one of the best teams in the city. I will absolutely say that. One of the best teams in the city with asset management. So, we are very fortunate. We have some wonderful people. We just try to do the best things we can all the time. So, I guess, another thing, too, I hope maybe more people in the city can look toward their colleagues and coworkers and their managers and anyone who works with them. Try and find people they think who are deserving of this award and nominate them, because it takes that little extra push. It takes that effort to go and put that out there. But it's really important. And it's hard sometimes to feel like you can find things to nominate people, but I think we all can find people to nominate. You don't have to look far. It doesn't have to be the biggest thing in the world. Just, there are people out there with nominating, so I hope more people will take the time to do that. I guess, just a final thank you. Unfortunately, my wife couldn't be here today, but just to thank her, you know, she's a great supporter, one of my biggest supporters. So unfortunately, she wasn't here, but she'll have something nice she can see when I get home here. So, thank you again. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Please join me in congratulating Zach.
Yay!
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations again, Zach. Do any council members like to say anything? Yes, Councilman Beckus?
Mr. Becker, thank you. I drive through that intersection every day on my way to work. And when I heard what had gone on, I was like, oh, no, that's not good. But the speed at which that project took place was unbelievable. Thank you for your dedicated service. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you again. Congratulations. All right. When you're ready, Madam Clerk, we'll allow a little bit of time to clear the chamber. Looks like you had a lot of fans here. That's great. That's great.
Next, we will have our vacant council seat vote.
Okay, very good. Well, I'm very honored to nominate Michelle Suarez, who's with us today and has been with us since a nice lunch we had. And there was a great article in this morning's newspaper. I know you've been doing some other interviews, but Michelle comes to us from the education community, and she's done so much in early childhood education and other areas of education and much, much more in Lincoln. And it was a search we've done over the holidays and first brought to us by Councilman Schob. Thank you, Councilman Schob. Certainly Marty Ramirez, who's here as well today with Mrs. Suarez. We're grateful for your help as well, Marty. I don't know if some of your family's here, but what we're, our process today is we're going to vote now, and then we'll have the meeting, and then we will swear Ms. Suarez in at the end of the meeting. So that's how that will work, and we appreciate your forbearance to stick through our meeting, to be officially sworn in. So with that, I would entertain a second.
Second?
Seconded by McGinnis. Is there any further discussion or comments on our nomination? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank everyone who put their name forward as an applicant, as to counsel. It gave each of us an opportunity to get to know almost a dozen people better. And thank you for your willingness to serve, and thank you for the breadth of experience you brought. And thank you for answering calls and emails during the holiday week, as we were each conducting our own interviews with you. So thank you very much for your interest in service, and I feel that Lincoln is well-served by the people who put their names forward, and I know that we will be well-served by Michelle Suarez's appointment to counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments from the council? Councilwoman Washington is correct. We did have a large, talented list from which to choose, and I want to thank the council for doing their due diligence during the holidays. It was a tough time to reach people, but all the applicants were so gracious, as was Ms. Suarez, in responding to us in a hard time of the year to talk to one another. So we certainly appreciate that. I appreciate the work of my colleagues in doing that, so that we could start at the start of the year with Mrs. Suarez. So, seeing no other comments, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
No other nominations?
No other, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
No, ma'am.
Are there any other nominations? All right. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Seeing none, now please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0.
Thank you again. All right, we can move on.
Okay. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda, Sections 1 and Sections 2.
Anyone present that would like to speak on these items, please come forward. Director, I see you. Thank you.
Happy New Year, Council. Maggie Stuckey-Ross with Parks and Recreation.
Yes.
I, thank you, Benny. I'm excited to bring the names of four individuals to serve on the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee for terms expiring in January of 2026. Many of you know that this is a committee that advises us on connectivity, priorities, and improvements within our pedestrian and bicycle urban infrastructure. It is jointly staffed by multiple departments, but I am very proud that they live with Parks and Recreation, and our team manages the majority of this work. So before you today, we have individuals who are trail advocates, right-of-way specialists, a former bike officer, trail commuters, and Parks and Rec professionals. So I'm really excited for the breadth of experience that they bring to the table. And I'd invite Dale Arp, Conan Schaefer, Connor Herbert, and Allison Spiker to come forward and introduce themselves. Come on up.
Not on their bicycles, however. I see that. Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah.
My name is Dale Arp. I've been a lifelong resident of Lincoln. I want to thank you for having us here today for this, and special hello to Benny. So, I've been also a longtime advocate of trails, first joining the Great Plains Trails Network in 1989. I saw a lot of trail development over the years. I've been involved in the comp plan and sub-area plans and what have you. I kind of see myself as a watchdog. I'm always looking for those missed opportunities that we got to seek out and correct, and that's why I'm joining the, I'd like to join the PBAC. I think that's a, be a good role for me.
Thank you for being here very much. Any other questions for Mr. Arp? All right. Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Allison Spiker, and thank you for considering me for the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee. I'm a Lincolnite, so I was born and raised in Lincoln and have spent many, many, many hours on Lincoln's amazing bike and trail system. First, on the back of my dad's bike on the burly, and now I've got a three-year-old that I bring on the back of my cargo bike, and we visit parks, we go to restaurants, we do about everything we can, when the weather permits, on bike. So I'm a bike enthusiast and love our trail system and love to see it continue to grow and be maintained. Professionally, I spent the beginning of my professional career in the Seattle area, and so I spent six and a half years there and just relocated with my family to be back here in Lincoln. And I'm really happy about that choice. I love being here with family, but also love the City of Lincoln, and so I'm looking for an opportunity to get plugged in and to get involved in serving the public. And then during my time in Seattle, I worked in the Parks and Rec Department for King County, which is the county that Seattle is located with. So I saw issues there. I saw opportunities there. I worked on many parks projects, some of them trail projects. So I'm looking forward to bringing that knowledge and expertise to this committee. So thanks for considering me.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Spiker? Okay. Thank you. Yes?
Hello, I'm Conan Schaefer, a former Lincoln police officer, and spent about six years on the Bike Patrol. And I know some of you from my days as the Sergeant-at-Arms for the city council when I was a liquor investigator. I've just been an avid cyclist for many years. I'm an almost daily commuter, unless it's really, really cold out. And just spent a day talking with John Carlson one day, and he said, instead of complaining, why don't you apply to be on the board?
That's a little deadening, yeah.
So he feels like he has just a little bit of part in this happening today. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Conan? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Connor Herbert. I graduated this spring from the University of Cincinnati, and I'm back here in Lincoln for a gap year before I start applying for grad school. And I figured one of the things that I've been really into in the last couple of years is transportation infrastructure. People my age oftentimes are looking for more sustainable opportunities to engage with their local community, and one of those ways is walking and biking. And so now I'm working here in Lincoln at Cycle Works, and I am figuring out that now is a good time to, you know, bring some interesting opinions and perspectives on transportation equity in my own city. So.
We're glad you're back.
Yeah.
The University of Nebraska has excellent graduate programs.
Any questions for, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Yep.
Great. Well, thank you very much for considering our nominees.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
We can move on. Anyone else present on this item, on these items? Would like to present? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, let's move on.
We cannot vote on these items. I'll be calling Item 1A, Appointing Dale Arp, Conan Schaefer, Connor Herbert, and Allison Spiker to the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee for Terms to Expire January 9th, 2026. Introduced by Ray Bold.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been seconded by Beckus. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0.
Congratulations.
Item 1B is reappointing Karen Griffin to the Lincoln Electric System Administrative Board for Terms to Expire December 31st, 2025. Introduced by Ray Bold.
Still moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1C is reappointing George Dungen to the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee for Terms to Expire September 1st, 2025. Introduced by Ray Bold.
Still moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1D is reappointing Suzanne Larson-Rodenberg to the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee for Terms to Expire September 1st, 2025. Introduced by Ray Bold.
Still moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1E is reappointing Todd Johnson to the Lincoln Municipal Golf Advisory Committee for Terms to Expire November 30th, 2025. Introduced by Ray Bold.
Still moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1F is reappointing Mike Calvert to the Lincoln Municipal Golf Advisory Committee for Terms to Expire November 30th, 2023. Introduced by Ray Bold.
Still moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1G is reappointing Bill Allen to the Lincoln Municipal Golf Advisory Committee for Terms to Expire November 30th, 2023. Introduced by Ray Bold.
Still moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1H is Investment Activity Report for Quarter Ending November 30th, 2022. Introduced by Schob.
Still moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Okay. Section 2, Items 2A through 2F were introduced by Schob.
Still moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Okay. That concludes our consent agenda for today. Next section will be Section 4, Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. Those that are giving testimony are asked to come forward. Please raise your right hand for the clerk to administer the oath, and then after the oath, please state your name and your address. I'll be calling Items 4A and 4B together. Item 4A is Application of Commercial Club Enterprises LLC, doing business as Lincoln Commercial Club for a Class C liquor license located at 200 North 11th Street, Suite 300, and the related manager application of Robert F. Burns. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you very much. Welcome, my friend.
Robert Burns, 1718 G Street, Lincoln, for 32 years.
Wow.
Been doing a lot of things. Yes. Tell us a little bit about your application, if you would, please.
Sure. The Lincoln Commercial Club was actually originally established in 1911. It evolved into the Chamber of Commerce, which subsequently moved, currently owned by Don Campbell, who resides in San Francisco. He spent a tremendous amount of money to restore it. It's a beautiful place, and now the effort is to make it into an event hall for weddings, receptions, corporate dinners, et cetera.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Burns? Comments? Thank you for being here.
Exciting.
It is exciting. We're glad you're here. All right. Thanks for being here. We can move on.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify?
Oh, thank you, Madam Clerk. I am out of touch here. I'm out of rhythm. Is there anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, please let's move on.
I'll call Items 4C and 4D together. Application of TLYNN Inc., doing business as Little Risky, for a Class C liquor license located at 4620 Bear Avenue, and the related manager application of Terry L. Patton.
Hi.
Terry Patton. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi. Hello. Do you want to tell us a little bit about your application?
Yeah. Little Risky is an offshoot of Riskies, which has been owned by my father for 30 years. I have worked for my father for 30 years. At 61, it'll be the first time he won't be my boss. Just the banker. So it's about half the size, and that's why he called Little Risky. It's just a little risky.
Okay, very good.
Any questions?
Are there questions for Ms. Patton? Any questions or comments? All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good luck.
Yes.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else present on this item that would like to testify? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, let's move on.
I'll be calling Items 4E and 4F together. Application of Western Oil 2 LLC, doing business as Speedy Mark 2906, for a Class D liquor license located at 2641 Fairfield Street, and the related manager application of Luke V. Moser. and the related manager application of Luke V. Moser. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir.
So counsel, John Dil Saver, spelling J-O-H-N-D-I-L-S-A-V-E-R. I represent Western Oil 2, doing business as Speedy Mart. We're, we've, this will be our eighth location in Lincoln. We just recently purchased four locations from Lickde Oil, who's been a longtime business partner in Lincoln. And it will be a nice combination with our other four existing C stores in the city. And look forward to your support if there's any questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Dil Saver? Yes.
That way.
Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Mr. Dil Saver, I just had one question because it was, it was a note attached saying that there was a zoning issue on this one and you might need a special permit. Would you mind explaining what the zoning issue is?
I do not know myself. I saw that there was a question, an individual in my office. So I'm not representing Luke. Well, I do represent Luke as the company is the, I'm not aware of what the special zoning request was for that. I know that there was a phone call from our company that was placed with the officer that had inquired about it.
Okay.
And yet, do you want to talk to Investigator Parker? Okay.
We were doing hand signals.
That's what I thought. He may know the answer if he's coming this way up. Thank you.
Investigator Scott Parker, Lincoln Police Department, 575 South 10th Street. So the zoning issue, if I'm to understand it correctly, is it's zoned industrial, in an industrial area? I could be wrong. But it is eligible for a special permit. Since the existing gas station, they have never sold alcohol out of there. So once they apply for the special permit and provide it's granted, then everything will be fine.
Thank you very much. That clears it up.
Thank you, Investigator Parker. And thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? Anyone else?
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming forward and hearing from all the applicants, I'd like to move approval of items 4A through 4F.
Second.
Seconded by Beccias. Any further discussion? Councilman McGinnis?
I just want to make it clear that I was not there on the opening day of the original Commercial Club in 1911.
Oh, really?
Contrary to popular belief to some of you.
Could have sworn I saw you there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McGinnis. All right. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Beccias?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.
Yes.
Yay. It's a little risky, but now you're your own boss, all right?
Next up is Section 5, our Public Hearing Resolutions. I'll be calling item 5A, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for December 1st through December 15th, 2022.
Anyone present that would like to testify on this item? Item 5A? Pending claims. Item 5A? Come on forward. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Thanks for having me. So my name is Wyatt Ray. I've been a resident in Lincoln my entire life, so 27 years. So I'm here regarding a claim that I filed with the city back in November. So it was filed against a pothole or an unkept section of road. And this is located at the intersection of DeVoe Drive and Arrow Ridge Road. So I went and got an estimate after I hit this section of road and it was estimated at $3,920 in damage to my 2017 Ford Focus. So a little backstory on the incident was I've never been in this neighborhood before, so it was new to me. I was dropping my boss off because his vehicle was having issues. So he was like, hey, can you drop me off? I said, hey, no, no big deal. It's on my way home. So dropped him off and then left. I was driving down the road, unfamiliar neighborhood, so you know, I wasn't speeding. I was going the posted speed limit or less, 25 miles an hour. And just looking for road signs saying, hey, how do I get out of here? I was coming up to what would be a T-intersection and I heard the, I think we've all heard it before where you get the thud. And you're like, what was that? Like, did I hit something in the road with something sitting in the road? So after a couple of choice words, I stopped the car. I got out and heard hissing. So I was like, okay, did I pop a hose or something? The front bumper was caved in a little bit and a couple of sections were damaged in the pictures that I sent over with my, my claim. And I got underneath the car, started looking around and saw that my air conditioning was damaged. So after that, I just kind of looked to make sure it was okay to drive home at the time and then got home and then got an estimate the next day. I know the circumstances for submitting claims on potholes is the city should be notified about them and then you guys get your grace period to, you know, fix them. And Lincoln does a good job at getting potholes fixed. So I've never had any issues with them prior to. But this one's a little different just because it was in a neighborhood that I'm not usually in. I don't know how much the traffic in this neighborhood is with this certain section of road, but I wouldn't have had the chance to submit a claim on it just because I wasn't native to the neighborhood. So I know it makes sense to have those systems in place, though, because you don't want somebody finding a pothole and running over it and having the city have to pay out on their dime. So I understand that, you know, it's important to have these things in place. But I also ask for a little bit of compassion on my end. Excuse me. So we moved my grandmother in with me in August and she's had health issues. And it's a big cost on my end. I apologize.
Take your time. Take your time.
It's a big cost factor on my end. So $4,000 is a lot of money to anybody. And I don't usually ask for handouts. But this is just something I'm not able to take care of at this time. So I hopefully ask you guys to reconsider the denial so I can get the vehicle back on the road safely. And it really mean the world to me. And I'm sorry for choking up and that's all I have.
Thank you very much for being here. Mr. Ray, first of all, are there questions from the council? Comments? Yes. Councilwoman Washington, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. City Attorney or Director Elliott, did we ever have a notice on this pothole prior to Mr. Ray encountering it?
Doncy Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10th. I see Director Elliott coming up as well, but the answer is no.
Yeah, it's my understanding that, and I think, Mr. Ray, you were correct and right in noting that it needed to be reported and there's a grace time. It doesn't have to be reported by the person who actually hits the pothole. So I was just checking with our city attorney. Thank you.
Did you also want to hear from Director Elliott? Would that be helpful?
Do you have anything to add on this one?
No, we went back three years and didn't have any reports or complaints or inquiries on this area, so nothing. This was the first we had heard of any issues there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for staff or for our applicant? All right. Mr.? Okay, just, we'll get right with you, Terry. Mr. Ray, tell me the address again where this occurred. I missed that part where you were at with.
So this would be at the intersection of DeVoe Drive and Arrow Ridge Road.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for being here. So we'll, when we get back to the voting session, we'll deal with your claim at that time and the report. So we'll either approve the whole report or pull your claim out if a councilperson chooses to do that
Okay.
during the voting session after one more item.
I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you for being here. Any other? Yes. Come on forward, Terry.
I understand it.
Okay.
I didn't know I was going to have to speak with two boys. He should not have to get in front of you. He should not have to come up here and grovel. My daddy ran Stephson International Airport, city and county of Denver, Colorado. And you know, the city council did not do, this little boy had to come up here and grovel. If you can't take care of your streets correctly, then guess what? Give us back our money. South Salt Creek Community Air, what am I? I am the founder of South Salt Creek Area Neighborhood Association, not a 501(c)(3) P. beggar place. That little boy should never have had to get up here and grovel. Never. Now, when you people don't get your shit stuffed, stuffed together, okay? What happens is this little boy now has to get up here and grovel and he'd be in tears. Now, is there a reason that the roads aren't fixed? Because mine haven't been fixed in 30 years, but hey, it's okay, isn't it? No, actually, it's not. Now, I do not know how to come up here and do this. I just don't, okay? I know how to come up and say, this little boy had to get up here and humbly beg when a road should have been fixed? Huh? Now, is there a reason that this little boy? What's your name? Okay. Sorry, your little boy's coming. Okay? Now, he shouldn't have to do that. I have the slightest idea where that place is. But hey, now he came up here, he told, now he already, he already, you guys could have done, you could have, you know what? You could have stopped this. You knew I was going to come up here because you know I have been without a furnace since December 22nd with no heat. We never got the, I don't know how to do this, okay? So here's my thank you. Young lady, thank you, but we still don't have no furnace. Young man, thank you for knowing the word. What's the word you know? Oh, it's crucial. It's crucial. What's crucial is you helped that little boy out. What's crucial is you get the police department, the fire department, the things they need. That is what is crucial, not this other crap. And you know what? Call him Tiff. Give this little boy some Tiff. He's only asking for $4,000, okay? Because if you don't give him some Tiff, by the time it's done, hm, Bear Edge Trucking LLC could not make the turn on I-80 at the downtown exit to deliver a pallet of toilet paper to Fire Station 3. That's one of my trucks. So when I say, what happened? Your stuff on your roads is too slick. So guess what? My trucks will stop coming in here, so I'd start stocking up on toilet paper. Now, Fire Station 3, we deliver toilet paper to them all the time. You know why? Firemen's have to buy their own groceries and their own toilet paper. And that's something. And they had to grovel and beg for their equipment. There's a reason you couldn't give this little boy? Just say, oh, hey, come on, $4,000, let's call it Tiff. Now, come on. Don't you have a petty cash account? $4,000 in petty cash? Instead, you make him get up here and I didn't even know I was going to have to be here today because I'm here for something else. And I don't feel well. I'll tell you what. Like I said, there's a reason that somebody couldn't have said, hey, petty cash over here. This gives a little boy his $4,000 so he doesn't have to come up here and grovel. Because you will not see me grovel. Now, South Salt Creek Community, nope, nope. I was on that board. That's where I learned, hm, I'm going to start my own neighborhood association. How come? Hm. Because we're not, I'm not one of you. Never have been. I'm a Colorado buffalo. And see, it should not make a difference, but it does. Been by, you been by my house lately? Been by my house? Now, this little boy should have never had to get up here. Because guess what? You would not be getting, and this ain't even me chewing. Can you imagine when I start chewing? Hm. So I would give this little boy his money. I really would. Because if not, I'm going to teach him how to see you guys. Now, I don't have time, I need a drink of water. So how much time I got? I got more time? Oh, I need some water. Young man? Good luck.
Is, is there anyone else present that would like to speak on this item? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, let's move on.
I'll call item 5B, approving a contract agreement between the City of Lincoln and GHD Services, Inc. for a library website redesign.
Is there anyone? Oh, here you are. I saw you there. Welcome.
Hi, councilmembers. Tracy Glass, Lincoln City Libraries, 136 South 14th Street.
Are there? Do you want to brief, I know you've sent us a very good email explaining.
Thank you.
Would you mind just giving us a quick overview again?
So since I was hired, we've been wanting to do a new website. And so I worked with the purchasing department along with the team of other library members and someone from city communications to put together the RFP, the Request for Proposals. We received 14 submissions. Is that right? Yes. 14 submissions to go through and we ended up, we'd like to award it to GHD Services. So this is for a four-year contract with the option for four one-year renewals afterwards. And they're going to totally redo our website to make it more user-friendly, to integrate all the library databases and websites that we pay for. That's why it was so crucial to have, that was part of our RFP process to have a company that had experience with city websites and public library websites.
Very good. Questions?
Go for Tracy.
All right. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
For being here. Anyone else present to comment on this item? Item 5B. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please move us on.
We can now vote on these items. Item 5A is accepting and approving the reports of new impending claims against the city for December 1st through December 15th, 2022. Introduced by Raybold.
Still moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Showb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5B is approving a contract agreement between the City of Lincoln and GHD Services, Inc., for a library website redesign. Introduced by Raybold.
Still moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Any further discussion? Seeing, nope, okay. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes Section 5 of our agenda. We shall now move on to Section 6, our public hearing ordinance, second reading and related resolutions. I'll be calling item 6A. Item 6A is text amendment 22013, request the Planning Department to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Sections 27.02.020, 27.02.160, 27.02.170, 27.06.100, 27.06.150, 27.62.080, 27.63.010, 27.63.020, 27.63.470, 27.63.680, 27.63.690, 27.63.730, 27.67.040, 27.69.035, 27.72.080, 27.72.120, and figure 27.67.040, to improve the development review process and to add clarity and flexibility to the sections amended and repealing said sections as figured as heretofore existing.
Welcome. Director Carey?
Good afternoon. Thank you for some time. David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Here before you today to use a little bit of your time to propose your consideration for this text amendment, which is a package of items that we often do at least once a year. This year, we've had a few of these where we have a kind of a working list of items that we believe can help either bring clarity or provide a better process or both. In this case, we believe that this package of what I would consider improvements to our zoning code for various different sections, obviously, for our applicants and for just clarity to the public as well. So this item was at the December 7th Planning Commission hearing, did receive unanimous approval. We did not have any opposition. We did have someone there for the topic of the private school change that's proposed here in support, and that was good to see, obviously. So certainly here to answer any questions that you may have. This makes a lot of sense, in our opinion, to move forward with these changes, and I will stop there.
Thank you. Questions for Director Carey? Comments on this item? All right, seeing none from the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other persons here that would like to comment on this item? Item 6A. Other persons? Other people? All right. Seeing none, we can move on.
Okay. I'll be calling items 6B, 6C, 6D, and 6E together. Item 6B is First Amendment to the Conditional Annexation Agreement for Foxtail Meadows Housing Subdivision. Amendment addresses construction and funding of intersection improvements at the South Folsom Street to serve future residents of Foxtail Meadows addition at Pioneer's Boulevard and South Folsom Streets. Also approving the Foxtail Meadows Phase 1 project redevelopment agreement between the city and SOFO Housing related to the redevelopment of the property generally located at Pioneer's Boulevard and South Folsom Streets and the related fiscal year 2223 CIP to authorize an appropriate $5,590,000 in TIF funds for the Foxtail Meadow Phase 1 redevelopment project and the related tax allocation bonds for the Foxtail Meadows Phase 1 redevelopment project in the amount not to exceed $5,590,000.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900, here in Lincoln. Appearing before you this afternoon on behalf of Hoppy &amp; Son and also SOFO Housing LLC, which is the developer of this project, of Foxtail Meadow. Today is the culmination of about a year and a half of work on this development project, Foxtail Meadows Phase 1 Project, as we're calling it. The four items on your agenda include the CIP amendment and the bond ordinance. While vitally important, I'm going to focus my attention on the other two items on your agenda, specifically the annexation agreement amendment and the redevelopment agreement. The amendment to the annexation agreement was amends the annexation agreement that was approved last March. That was approved to let this project or these multiple projects make applications to Nebraska Investment Finance Authority for the proper funding of low-income housing tax credits for the development of these projects. And now we had to come back and deal with the actual design of the intersection improvements for the three intersections that are located south of Pioneer's Boulevard, north of Volchini on, off of South Folsom Street. The agreement deals with that issue, describes the turn lanes that are required, the right-of-way that is required to be dedicated, the design of the improvements, also identifies the cost. The cost of the intersection improvements for the south and the middle intersections was in excess of $1.6 million just to serve the Phase 1 project. And comes up with a very creative mechanism for the funding of the intersection improvements. The developer, SOFO Housing, will be funding those improvements to be reimbursed by various funding sources that we described in the annexation agreement, including the Lincoln on the Move funding for approximately $400,000, the Affordable Housing Fund for approximately $700,000, and then also directed impact fees. The SOFO Housing is working with the Community Development Resources. CDR is the lender on this project, and we have pledged those reimbursement rights to the CDR as a way to get this affordable housing project funded for the intersection improvements along South Folsom Street. So we think that's a pretty creative way. In my estimation, I haven't seen that done before, but I think it's a good template that we can use in the future for dealing with affordable housing incentives as really described by our Coordinated Action Plan for Affordable Housing in the City of Lincoln. The second item that I really wanted to focus on is the redevelopment agreement. Foxtail Meadows is really intended to be a mixed-income neighborhood, and I show on the overhead, just to put it in context, there is, West Bypass is on the east side of this property, South Folsom Street's on the west side of the property. It's south of Pioneer's Boulevard in the north, and it is just north of the Optimus Baseball, baseball park or complex. The Phase 1 project is really the southern half, as you can see by the overhead. We broke it into four phases. In my estimation, this redevelopment agreement is really four redevelopment projects because we have Phase 1A, which is comprised of 131 dwelling units. They will be funded by the tax-exempt bond and 4% tax credits that were approved by and will be issued by the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority. Those are designed for families and individuals of the city of Lincoln earning no more than 60% of area median income. Phase 1B will consist of 35 dwelling units and will be targeted to individuals, again, earning no more than 60% of area median income, and that's being funded by the 9% tax credit allocation that was awarded to this project by NIFA. Phase 1C is really a home ownership opportunity, consists of 21 dwelling units. Did receive a funding from the Department of Economic Development of the state of Nebraska that, under the Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust Fund program, to really encourage incentivize those home ownership opportunities for primarily first-time home buyers. And then Phase 1D consists of 53 dwelling units that really constitute workforce housing. Don't have all the other funding sources, but it's being really designed with the subsidy built in for workforce housing within this neighborhood. In total, there's 240 dwelling units that are being incentivized as a part of this Phase 1 project as part of, as Foxtail Meadow. The investment is over approximately $53 million in the tax increment financing that is described in the redevelopment agreement amongst the various four sub-phases, is comprised of Now, as I mentioned, this took us about 18 months to get to this stage, and we would not have got here without the help and assistance of a lot of people. And I want to make sure I do thank people. First of all, Urban Development Department and Dan Marvin and Wynne Hermsdahl were instrumental in helping us to really design and come up with the funding mechanisms for all the various intersection improvements and how the project was going to be worked through the process. The challenge in my mind is we dealt with raw, unimproved land that we had to meet time schedules from the City of Lincoln and the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority, and it was hard to get all that done. But with the assistance of all the city staff and individuals, we were able to get it to this stage. The Planning Department was also very key in our process. David Carey and Steve Hendrickson and Ben Callahan helped us because, and we've just scratched the surface of what has been approved. The plat was a very complicated process. The planned unit development was a very complicated process, and they're very helpful in getting us through the process and the schedule and the sequence as required for approvals. The Lincoln Transportation Utilities Department was also very helpful in coming up with the funding mechanisms that we use for the intersection improvements. And Liz Elliott, Thomas Schaefer, Bob Simmering were instrumental in helping us work through the design process for the improvements and the funding for the intersection improvements. And lastly, Law Department, Abby LaTrell went out of her way to really help us meet all the schedule requirements that we had. I am pleased to see that our tax increment bond funding closing is scheduled for next week, so we're able to move forward. And I do have to thank Tim Gergen because he kind of stepped in late and did an instrumental job in helping us get to this stage. This is, there was a high level of cooperation by all the parties, and it was pretty unique in my estimation. I was happy to be a part of it. So that's where we are. The items in front of you for your agenda for a public hearing, we would expect a vote in two weeks when you meet again, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. Questions? Comments? Yes, Councilman Beckyus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Houston, you and Mr. Hoppy, you keep coming back in front of us. We keep saying, "Yes, sir. Please build. Please build." What is your timeframe on this? We're very anxious.
Well, I will let Fred address that, but I mean, part of our issue is that the grading has started. And we can do that under the Nebraska Community Development Law. We can start grading. It's without a question about the BUT4 test. Grading has started. I think if we close on the tax bonds next week, maybe it's in three weeks. I think it's February 1st. I think construction can start soon thereafter for the Phase 1A project. The Phase 1B project will probably start in the spring also. So probably units occupied in 2024.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilwoman Washington?
I guess I'd like to make a comment, just because my colleague here, Councilman Beckyus, had noted that you've been before us numerous times. And I want to, I know that the intersection improvements were a tough issue to work through, and I'm really glad that you all stuck with it. It took a lot of patience to get to this point where we've resolved how to fund the intersection street improvements. So thank you very much for your patience and fortitude.
Any other comments? Questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. All right. Anyone else care to comment on this item? Mr. Hoppy?
Fred Hoppy, 1600 Stony Hill Road, Lincoln. I'll just give a quick summary of what all we've been doing and what we're doing and when it's going to happen, hopefully. Gosh, it was two years ago, the first time I came in front of you, I think, was commenting and encouraging the Affordable Housing Action Plan for Lincoln. And coming out of that plan, one of the things that Hoppy &amp; Son, my son and I, decided we wanted to do was bring affordable housing to suburban Lincoln, which there just isn't much of, and it's dang hard to do. And I started working a little bit with Richard to try and soften the concept of taking TIF to the suburban regions. It's extremely important. You can't build affordable housing without closing a gap. And the gap between the amount you can finance and the amount it costs to build affordable housing and the income stream that affordable housing generates, keeping affordable housing affordable. Consequently, there's a gap. And because of that, when you're in the business, half of your time is spent figuring out how to close the gap. TIF's one way, and that helps a lot. Grants are another way. And in this project, the overview of Foxtail is, we're entitled for 650 units. Of those, we looked at the situation and said, "Hey, if you're doing suburban TIF, you don't want to put all low-income housing in one place. You want a mixed-income neighborhood. You want it that way so that everybody's, you know, you're going to good schools and you're going with all kinds of people and not just low-income people." And so in that process, you know, we looked at it, we put it together, we designed it out, and started work on it at that point in time. And to get it all put together, including all the different parts, took us a lot of times coming in front of you. And we have, for the project so far, we're looking at probably putting in, in total, about 300 units of low-income housing. We currently have entitlement to 131 units in a 4% project, and, which is a bond project. The bonds, we're intending to close those, or we've set a bond closing date of February 1st, if everything works perfectly. And we have a 9% project we're entitled for 35 units. So off the get-go, starting this spring, we're going to be working on, well, first thing we're doing is putting in the infrastructure. And that's already in place. Bookstrom's coming, I don't know, two weeks to start digging trenches and putting in that stuff, undergrounds. And we're getting the grading done right now. We'll start, as soon as that's done, with construction on 166 units, low-income. The next project coming down the pipe, Tom kind of gave a lead-in to it, is a middle-income project essentially, or like a middle-income project. It's market rate. One thing our company's good at is getting grants or tax credit awards. And in that, we have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund grant in conjunction with Nebraska Housing Resource to essentially finance the construction of single-family homes. And that'll be done not by Hoppy &amp; Son or Hoppy Companies, but by a home builder in Lincoln, hopefully just one. But it's in conjunction with Nebraska Housing Resource. This whole project, the subdivision, has taken the cooperation, not only of the city, and it's been great. The city's been really helpful. And I, you know, the top of the pack were Dan and Steve Hendrick's really helpful. Wynne also. So that, we couldn't have done it without all that cooperation and driving it through. And, you know, as long as it took, also pushing the timing, which is, was great and was really helpful. But also the Lincoln Community Foundation and Community Development Resources, all of those, all played a different part in putting all the pieces together and getting them close to the finish line. Well, in all, Phase 1 is, well, the other thing's Hope Church. I shouldn't neglect mentioning Hope Church. When we originally got the property, we got the property south of Hope Church from the Optimus, and it was originally part of their ballfield complex. Not long after we got it, we started designing and thinking about what we wanted on that ground, and which was about 27 acres. And we called up Hope Church and said, "Hey, you guys, we want to put a affordable housing project south of you. You guys want to talk about it, or can we meet with you and show you what we're thinking?" And in the process, we got with the church to work with us on the design, and they then agreed to sell us 14 acres to continue the housing around their church. And what we've really tried to do is create a neighborhood, a neighborhood where you could get all services, a lot of people, and where you could raise a family in a good suburban Lincoln neighborhood. Anyway, that's what we did. It's teed up now. We're all ready for, hopefully in two weeks, we can get a vote from you guys. We're going to close on bonds, which really is the first fiscal, or the first action step of getting the housing put in place, other than what we've been doing now. And we entertain any questions and appreciate your support, which, thank you.
Questions for Mr. Hoppy?
Comments?
All right. Thank you very much. It's a great project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Marvin?
Dan Marvin, Urban Development. I'm probably able to come up first, but there was annexation stuff, and I thought Tom was more capable of answering those questions. But what I would like to point out to you, when we started, when we first worked with Fred on Gate House, I don't know if Fred had done a 4% bond issues, but we talked about, how do we marry up the ability for tax increment financing to play a role in 4% bond issues, which is what happened with Gate House? And I'm guessing there's going to be ribbon cutting going on there this spring. So then, we learned something there. Every time we do something, we learn a few more things. And we learned from the action plan that we did not have a player on the financing end, so we wanted to help stand up CDR, which this council has supported and provided that. So CDR is coming in on this particular project to help fill some gaps, timing gaps on financing, provided with funds from the Lincoln Community Foundation. But again, we're trying to stand up another entity that can play a role in affordable housing. They'll have a new executive director there. And in this particular project, we're also going to test the ability to come up with creative tools with TIF for down payment assistance for owner-occupies on projects too, to help close a gap that purchasers of property at specific income levels have difficulty because home prices are higher. And, you know, when you go and ask the typical family, "Hey, do you have $25,000 lying around for a down payment?", they're going to say, "Well, no, I don't." And so I think we can come up with creative tools there. So each time we do something, we learn a little bit more, we can apply it in more places, we create templates. And I want to thank Fred for helping us along in our learning curve here. But this is a huge jump up in the number of units. 240 over the next several years is a huge jump too. So I'll stop there. Answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for Director Marvin? Comments? Thank you very much. Anyone else present that would like to testify on this item?
I can come in?
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes, you may. Come on down.
I'm going to come twice.
Okay.
So I'll come in my first five minutes, because this is not how it works.
Mm-hmm. On this item?
Come back for another five minutes, right?
One?
Uh-uh, uh-uh. South Salt Creek Area Neighborhood Association is different than my house that got destroyed. I wouldn't count my chickens yet, young man, because I can't see. Here's your doodad. It costs a dollar at the dollar store, okay? Now, it used to be, it had to be $5 and had to eat it. So here, this is yours because you know what the word? Crucial. So here, this is yours, because you know what the word "crucial" really means. Here, love, love. Because don't make me throw it, because I'm not hitting. There you go. Because isn't that what we do? Oh, let's come up here, and let's just make things, just wait a minute. Now, this is for you, young lady, for your daughter. My, there you go. Because isn't that what we do? Of course it is. And this is for this one, for the fire trucks. See, the fire trucks that my people drive look like this. Hook and ladder. Denver, Colorado has big skyscrapers. You guys are fools. Now, hmm, your water is contaminated. Here you go. So, yeah, this, and this, now, this is a kid's toy.
I appreciate that.
So I'm sorry, you know, I, yeah, I mean, this bit, like, you know.
A little too advanced for me.
Okay. And here, this, now, this is brand-new. That, the little kid just said, here, mom, see? And this, this is brand-new. Now, don't touch them like they're dirty. Touch them like they knew.
I'm just waiting.
There you go. Okay. Your water's contaminated. And the little man that you guys all took such great pride in ruining. You don't have a crane operator, and I'm not going to help you. Sorry. So your infrastructure, you know, that's 200 high in affordable housing. Affordable housing is Section 8 housing. Affordable housing is Section 8 housing, and I'm sick and tired of paying for it. So now, listen, hmm, how much time I got?
Two minutes and 21 seconds.
Yeah, because you imagine me as an attorney. I was going to be a prosecuting attorney. I'd have been a hanging effing judge by now. I didn't say, I didn't say bad words. Okay, now, listen. Now, your water is contaminated. And that concrete company, hmm, there was going to be a temporary batch plant. You know how medians I went through? South Salt Creek Community Organization? Roger Feigard, Wen Hurstead, Dan Martin, no, Dan wasn't on there yet. He was, oh, that's right, you're on City Council. You never made it to Senate, did you? Like I said, not on my watch. I wanted rid of Jane Raybold for a punch to her in the head. And, you know, it's when we do things, we don't do them. Oh, I don't computer. I don't internet. Yeah. You been by my house lately? Because I drive by. Because see, that concrete company, I don't care. NevoCo owns it now. The water is contaminated over there. And you know what? If I have to have a Geiger counter for the water, you think everybody wants to move to Lincoln, Nebraska? The water is contaminated, and you all allowed it to happen. I appreciate you very much, but I still don't have my furnace. I had to put my dogs in our car. Yeah. And so you know what? I have my own fireman truck, 1946 fireman truck. My grandpa was also sheriff when my daddy was born, 1928. So you guys do whatever you're going to do. But see, you know what the rules to OSHA are? Let me tell you. They got to give you 24 hours notice, but their sister doesn't. So the day that I was passing out here in front of Lancaster County Commissioners, I walked your neighborhood barefoot. So if everybody talks their trash, talk it. Because guess what? Local 21 says, F you. We're not helping you. Without Local 21, don't be looking at my butt. Without Local 21, you got no crane operator. Yeah. So when Local 21 shows up, my husband's Local 21. Yeah. And you know what? Now, I am South Salt Creek Area Neighborhood Association, so you're not going to see me cry. But when I come back up here as homeowner, homestead owner of 349 South First Street, and I don't give a good goddamn who thought they bought it. Because guess what? OSHA showed up in town, and you're, we're shutting your jobs down. OSHA is on the job sites. Wow. Now, I gave a few people a heads-up, more than their business, but I gave them a heads-up. How much I got?
One minute now.
Oh, shit. Hell. Guys, ever been to a union meeting? Especially with Local 24? Ask Colorado. Oh, that's right. You guys didn't know, did you? I'm from Colorado. Homeowner, huh? Small business owner, right? Yeah. Gambino Stables, working canines. I didn't, I guess, I didn't know. Moon was a small business owner, too. Colorado! I bet you don't get your hub. You want to bet? I already made a few phone calls. Yeah. Because see, there's a federal agent that wants his own air, his own doodad, his own, I don't feel well. His own airstrip. And you guys denied him. That's conflict of interest. Yeah, it is. So I made a few phone calls. Called in some favors, because isn't that how it works? Don't be checking out the butt. You guys don't be checking out the butt. Isn't that how it works? Of course it is. That's why I'm all over the internet. And you know who put me on the internet? Fact F, Thomas Schaefer. Yeah. On City Time. How much I got? Okay. Now, I will come back as a homeowner, because they didn't, I don't care who they think, they took my property. You can take my property, because I'm taking you people. Now, don't, don't shut me down either. Because I will act a fool, and any poor parker, he'll have to get up and know what to do. You want a black car parker? Got my money?
Anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? These items, 6B through 6E.
I can, I am. Yes or no? Terry Pope Gonzalez, owner, 349 South First Street. That's two different entities. But let me talk or not?
Well, you've had your time on this issue, Terry. So, okay?
Please come by my house, because your town shut down.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, we can move on.
That concludes Section 6 of our agenda. We shall now move on to Section 7, ordinances, third reading, and related resolutions.
I have a point of order. If I may.
I don't, can we do that from the audience? Mr. Christie? I don't know. I don't think we can from Roy, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask for advice from our city attorney.
Can't make a point of order?
I think only the council can.
No.
Sorry. Thank you.
I vehemently disagree with that.
I think it's the rule, the rules of the council that, I don't know if you want to explain that, Mr. Christie, but it comes, it has to be a member of the council, I am assuming.
The Roberts Rule only applies to the council and not to the?
We'll let him explain it. I think so.
Roberts Rule relates to the members of the board, or in this case, the council. And point of order is for people who are members of the board or the council. I don't know what issue you have.
Well, the point of order has to do with Items 7A through 7F, and the inappropriateness of adding more dialogue language into what's being considered without having a public hearing on the actual verbiage. It's inappropriate, and in my humble opinion, we should have more public hearing and discourse, since this has been delayed three weeks to change the verbiage.
All right. Well, thank you, Roy. And thank you, Mr. Christie. We will move on, Madam Clerk, to these items. Okay.
Reading Item 7A, adopting the Revised Flood and Water Quality Protection Manual, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second?
Seconded by Beckius. Any further discussion? Okay. Mr. Christie? No? Oh, you're just stretching. Okay. All right. Any further discussion, Mr. Beckius?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to introduce Amendment 1, which I believe the council has copies of, and it was shown on the agenda today. Amendment 1 allows for the update to the Drainage Criteria Manual, or the Flood and Water Quality Protection Manual, to update the rest of the sections according to the items passed today.
There's a motion, and I am going to pass the gavel to Councilwoman Bowers so that I may participate in this debate. And there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion on Councilwoman Beckius's motion to amend Number 1? Okay, seeing no discussion on Councilwoman Beckius's motion to amend Number 1, I would please ask for a roll-call vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Motion carried 4-2.
As we get ready to move on to 7B, I would just like to make a quick statement that the goal of how we move forward with this debate is to make sure that we are all crystal clear on what we're voting on, and we're doing it in a very orderly way, in that everyone has the opportunity to speak, and that everyone has the opportunity to utilize the authority and power that they have from being elected to the city council. So we're going to do this in a very orderly way. Just to remind folks of some rules. If there is a call, if there is a person, member who'd like to call the question, that does require a second, and that does require a vote of five members. And we can only discuss one amendment at a time. With those being some of the rules in place, let's go ahead and move on to Item 7B. Councilwoman Ward?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I have a motion on Item 22R-567. Still on 7A, if we may.
Okay, absolutely.
And it's in your packet, councilmembers?
So Councilwoman Ward has a motion to amend on Item 7A, introduced by Councilwoman Ward. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis. Councilwoman Ward, would you like to introduce your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this amendment is, you'll find in your packet, is actually, is replacing the resolution introduced December 5th. And what it does is ask the Department of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities, it directs them to collaborate with our community stakeholders to develop a work plan in the next six months, and to address the feasibility, and set up structural solutions to help mitigate the floodplain elevations, and to look at funding options as well, and to put into place updated mapping being completed that we'll get from FEMA, and to have it done within a six-month period. And with that, Mr. Chair? That changes 22R-567.
Okay. Is there any discussion on Councilwoman Ward's motion to amend? Councilman Beckius, or Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilwoman Ward, I appreciate what you're saying, and I think this is something I'm also passionate about. I'm a little concerned about procedural. We cannot, would you mind asking the city attorney?
Not at all.
We voted on this one already, so should we have done this before we voted after?
No, that is, may I interject?
Sure.
What we voted on was, we voted on Councilwoman Beckius's motion to amend. We did not vote on the main motion.
We have not voted on the main motion yet. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mr. Christie, for coming forward.
Did that answer your question?
It did. I thought we voted on the main motion, I was wrong.
Are there, is there any other discussion on Councilwoman Ward's? Councilman McGinnis, you're recognized?
Yeah, I would like to support this, because I believe out of all these rules and regulations and new, you know, ordinances and everything, really, the only one that will actually bring flood relief to certain areas of town would be structures. I mean, the rest of this is just regulations to move people around or out of the floodplain area. This would actually bring a lot of the areas that are in the floodplain. Structures could do a lot of that. And I think a study on that, which includes a cost-benefit analysis, which we haven't had on the, on the main Drainage Criteria Manual that was brought forward, what most of these are brought forward on, the text amendments, that there wasn't really any type of a cost-benefit analysis done on those. So this is something that I would like to move forward and see if we can get going. And Councilwoman Ward, Washington was very interested in doing a study anyway of the Salt Creek floodplain area, and start moving that. We put some money into the, into the budget for doing a big study along there. So I think this could coincide with that and get a lot of work done in the next six months, if we can get this through.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman McGinnis, for your statements. Councilwoman Washington, you're recognized?
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowers. Councilwoman McGinnis, thank you. I won't be informal. Thank you for recognizing my, my work to do a larger scenario study for the entire Salt Creek watershed. I think that anything that we're working on that is similar can move us into a better place. I'm a professional planner, and so, and I don't like to just plan to plan. I like to plan to put things into action. I don't actually see that this amendment that Councilwoman Ward put forth requires a cost-benefit analysis. I do see that this, this motion does ask that a work plan be developed to look at structural solutions, and I certainly thought that was already on, in the plans. I thought that was what the next step was. I appreciate, I guess, the need to put it into law. But I'm a little confused about the, having to put the new mapping into place in the next six months. That's, that's even faster than, than anything can happen, but...
Council, Councilwoman Ward, you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilwoman Washington. I think this is intended to make sure we don't, for lack of a better term, shelf it, shelf. And so, to put it into law, the work plan. And you're correct that the feasibility, or feasibility, financial piece is not listed in here, per se, as you just heard. But it's just so that we can keep it moving and not actually put it into language in what we pass, so that we don't, so that we have a timeframe of six months, which we didn't have before. And add some structure to what's out there. Yes, I think Councilwoman McGinnis has something.
Councilwoman?
So perhaps that helps.
Sorry. The way I read this is that we provide information to the public regarding the potential new floodplain elevations. It's not saying that we need to have the new floodplain elevations done by FEMA. And I think part of that would be, as we discuss structures, it changes the floodplain areas. So I think that would be part of the providing information, what areas would possibly be taken out, or other areas that will be brought in because of the structure. So I think that's the idea behind this, was just the potential, providing information to the public about the future mapping.
Not necess, I'm sorry, may I, Mr. Chair? Not, not, thank you. Not necessarily to complete it, but the work plan should be completed in six months. But to do that outreach and community collaboration with the public, again.
I apologize for not having a complete review of this, but it was on my desk at 2:05.
Yep, well, yep.
We were in meetings back-to-back, and I'm reading it on the dais.
I understand that feeling very well. That's how this has been, been flowing, so I do understand. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion on Councilwoman Ward's motion to amend? Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilwoman Ward, I think you and I are on the same page on this. We've had a couple of small conversations. I believe that the areas of our city that are currently in the floodplain and susceptible to flooding can be helped by structural measures. And you're, if I understand correctly, help me better understand, your motion to amend would say, let's start working on that now. No deadlines, no map revisions, no, I'm sorry, there was a deadline.
For a work plan.
For a work plan, for a plan to do, to start working on the plan.
Correct, correct. For six months, yes.
Councilwoman Washington said something about maps. I don't remember us having.
Update in mapping being completed and identifying some funding resources. There's, you know, I mean, at least identified.
Okay.
Identified.
I know we've all talked about the FEMA maps taking some time.
They do.
Yeah.
They do.
So that concerns me a little bit.
And I don't think it's specific in this amendment that FEMA maps have got to be completed.
Or flood.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. We know how fast FEMA does not work.
Yeah, I, and I think, yes.
Well, they don't, right? I'm sorry, but, yeah.
I, I, just my confusion, and I apologize for belaboring this at the dais. Are we directing them to finish Lincoln floodplain maps and a work plan within six months? I think that's a little optimistic, too. The work plan, I agree with completely. But I'm not sure if I understood, if I vote on this, am I voting to have LTU have new floodplain maps by six months?
Have a work plan, to have a work plan.
Work plan, okay. Is there a language, yeah?
Is there a language, yeah? Thank you.
Any further discussion on Councilwoman Ward's motion to amend? Seeing none, Councilwoman Ward, would you like to close on your motion to amend?
I think I'm good.
Okay. Seeing all discussion has been completed, may I please call a roll call vote on Councilwoman Ward's motion to amend for 7A?
Washington? Bowers?
No.
Choob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 4-2.
Okay. Now we will move back to the main motion of 7A. We already had the first and the second on that. Any further discussion on the main motion?
Do you have a?
Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, just wondering, was there another amendment being proposed? Nope, it's on the next one.
Yep, on the next one.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other amendments for 7A? Okay, seeing none. We've seen the amendments, we've had discussion. May we please call the roll on motion, on item 7A?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to 7B.
Item 7B, text amendment 22012, request of the Director of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities to amend City of Lincoln Design Standards Titles 2 and 3 to revise the flood and water quality protection measures introduced by Bowers.
So?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion on the main motion? Councilman Beckius, you recognized?
Yes, I would like to introduce motion to amend 2A.
Is there a second for Councilman Beckius's motion to amend?
I think it's 1A.
I think it's 1A.
Yeah.
Nope, well, it's a second.
I apologize. 1A.
Motion to amend is number 1A.
Oh, well, Beckius's amendment number, Beckius's second amendment. So if you see it on our list, it says Beckius MTA number 2A.
And then motion to amend 1A.
Number, yep. Any, is there a second for that one?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Councilman Beckius, would you like to introduce your motion?
Yes, this motion raises the, the limit for the minimum flood corridor threshold as currently proposed from, the current proposal's 40 acres, this increases it to 80 acres.
Any discussion on Councilman Beckius's, Councilman McGinnis?
What is the current acreage number for minimum flood corridor? Do we know?
Councilman Beckius, do you know, or should we invite up staff?
We can invite up staff if...
Tim Zock, LTU Watershed Management, 555 South 10th Street.
Councilman McGinnis, the floor is yours.
Yeah, my question right now is in the, or in the city code right now, what is the minimum flood, flood corridor?
The current standard is the minimum corridor has to be preserved if an area drains greater than 150 acres, or if there's a defined bed and bank, and that defined bed and bank can be found less than the 150-acre threshold.
Okay, so the current is 150?
That's incorrect. The current is both, either if it's 150 acres, or if there's a defined bed and bank. That defined bed and bank can be found at 15 acres, 20 acres. On average, we find that at around 40 acres.
But the amount of acres in that number, what's the number for the amount of acres?
So the standard is, asks, whether it drains 150 acres, or if it has a defined bed and bank.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion on Councilman Beckius's motion to amend? Okay, seeing none, Councilman Beckius, would you like to close on your motion to amend?
No, sir, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, having it been moved and seconded, may we please call a roll call vote on Councilman Beckius's motion to amend 1A?
No.
Bowers?
No.
Washington?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion tied.
Failed.
Failed.
Motion to amend, 3-3 tied. Motion to amend fails.
Thank you.
Now we're, now we're back to the main motion. Councilman Beckius, would you like to introduce your, your other motion to amend?
Yes, I'd like to introduce motion to amend 1B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Councilman Beckius, would you like to open your motion to amend?
Yes, thank you. Amendment 1, excuse, yes, 1B, allows for piping of channels that drain 40 to 100 acres if they are non-jurisdictional, and channels of a length of less than 300 feet.
Is there any discussion on Councilman Beckius's motion to amend 1B?
Could you explain a little more, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just basically, could you explain a little bit more, less than, would you say that again? I'm sorry, I was trying to listen to follow.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, help me out.
So from 40 to 100 acres, this would allow channels in that drainage area to be piped if they're non-jurisdictional, as defined by the US Army Corps of Engineers. This would also allow piping if the length is less than 300 feet. My understanding of the situation today is that piping is not currently allowed.
And this would, we originally had the bed and bank, and we had to maintain a corridor, we could use culverts and pipes instead? Is that what you're?
That's an alternative, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Beckius.
Any further discussion on this motion to amend? Okay, seeing no further discussion on this motion to amend, may we please call the roll on this item, on this motion to
Choob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0.
Okay, now we are back at the main motion. Councilman McGinnis, you recognized?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend on number 2. This is amendment A to Bill 22R-568, and it's to, on 7.2, it says, "To add the language upon the city's adoption of the 100-year floodplain map for the sub-basin, once it is based upon NOAA, Atlas, 14 participation, precipitation, then the word adjacent to the floodplain requirements described above shall no longer apply in the design standards for that sub-basin."
Is there a second on Councilman McGinnis's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Councilman McGinnis, would you like to open?
What I'm saying here is, once we get the new floodplain maps, and when the federal government comes forward and sets the new floodplain maps with the higher precipitation that we expect them to be using, then we should agree that the areas that they declared as flood-prone, or floodplain, would be the limit, and would be the area that would be flooded. And we don't need to expand that area beyond what the federal government has told us will be floodplain.
Is there any discussion on Councilman McGinnis's motion to amend? Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would support this amendment because, as I understand it, we don't have the FEMA regs, as Councilman McGinnis just explained, and it's not required by the state. And to impose on the local level seems like overreach to me. And one more regulation that we don't need to impose on people, so why would we do that till we need to? So I will be supporting this amendment. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion on Councilman McGinnis's motion to amend? Councilman Cho?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. McGinnis, I think I understand what you're saying, but just so I'm clear, right now, we have floodplain and land adjacent to the floodplain. And if FEMA issues new maps, we all anticipate it'll absorb the current adjacent area. And would the new land now then become the adjacent area? And that's what, is that what you're addressing?
Yeah, and I'm addressing that we will no longer need to protect that adjacent area or, or encumber it with more regulations, because it will have already been determined and with science, and they would have gotten to and showed us where the floodplain was. We're gonna talk a little bit more about adjacency in, in our next ones coming up, too. But I have some questions that is adjacent, really, part of adjacent to floodplain in our map, in our deals, but that's further on in some of these amendments. Well, what I'm saying is, basically, if the government comes along and says, "The new floodplain, here it is, here's the flood area, here's your floodplain," we don't need to go further with that above and beyond what the government tells us, and create more rules and regulations and encumbrances on the property next door.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. Councilman McGinnis, my understanding to, right now, without the proposals, is that we have a, a set of floodplain standards and design standards and regs that look at floodplain and those lands directly adjacent that have a risk for flooding. And the floodplain that, when we talk about that line, we're talking about the 100-year floodplain. So I think I understand how currently we're looking at lands adjacent and asking them sort of to beware, be careful. And you're suggesting that if we get a new floodplain line, that we should not be noticing or giving notice to those lands adjacent to beware or be careful beyond the 100-year floodline.
Yeah, what, what I'm saying is, we don't need to put the same regulations on somebody that's adjacent to, that is actually in the floodplain, just because we think it might be adjacent to it. No, I'm saying we can identify and tell people that they're adjacent to a floodplain, but without them having to go through all the rules and regulations of bringing their buildings up, flow through, bringing their whole lot above the flood, two foot or at this freeboard, that's what we're looking at, to bring that whole lot up and above the floodplain if it's not required.
Councilwoman Washington, does that answer your question?
It, it, it answers part of it. I think I'm also trying to unders, you know, I'm working a couple of things at the same time here. And I know that folks who don't, who live adjacent can also buy flood insurance, and I guess if we don't have anything around that, perhaps, I'm trying to understand what the implications are. Can I ask a clarifying question of staff about?
Absolutely.
Current, not the proposal, but the current rules? Thank you, Mr. Zock.
I'm over here this time.
All right. Would you tell us what the current rules are right now around adjacency?
Yeah.
And how much someone is encumbered by rules around adjacency?
Yeah, so our current standard today is that we want to protect, we want to keep all development out of the 100-year, the limits of the 100-year flood, that could be in the floodplain, or that could be outside, you know, higher up the hill. And so we want to protect those areas that are adjacent to floodplain, floodplain by keeping the building area out of the floodplain and protecting the buildings. So that's currently in the standard today, and so striking that is, really reduces that protection that's in there today.
And how long have we had this concept of adjacency?
I haven't gone, looked at the code and when it was effective, but it's been in there for a long time, I'm guessing for 10, 20 years.
Okay. I really appreciate that. I mean, I know that this, the state doesn't have it in theirs, but it is, when I was reviewing, and just a second, and I did, reviewing the 2022 State of Nebraska Flood Hazard Mitigation Plan, they do talk about adjacency being an extra benefit in flood, flood protection for residents. And though they don't require it, they do suggest that it is a benefit to communities and encourage communities to do so. They actually referenced Lincoln's existing floodplain regs as a model for the rest of the state. So I appreciate you walking us through that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
We'll do Councilman Beckius, and then we'll do Councilman McGinnis.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
Answer my question.
Councilman McGinnis?
When I was looking through, and thank you, Tim, for all your work and listening to me for the last few weeks, so I appreciate it. But when I was looking through that section, and I don't have it in front of me actually, 26, the design standards, it does talk about adjacency. It talks about adjacency to streams, detention cells, bed and bank river, or flow through rivers, but it doesn't say adjacent to floodplain. And it seems to be something we're adding to as part of our new rules, that we're adding floodplain to that section. So did we have, I mean, I know the city has been telling developers that they have to adjacent to, and that's been something they've been telling, but had it been in there that we had to, next to floodplains?
So a floodplain comes from flooding of an open channel. It's the 100-year flood in a open drainage way. And so the standard currently today applies to any open drainage ways and protecting development from that 100-year flood. And so it's applied to an open drainage way that only drains, you know, 10 acres, as well as applied to an open drainage way like Salt Creek or Dead Man's Run that drains square miles.
We are adding floodplain to that section.
We're clarifying that so that it's clear that this does apply to areas adjacent to the floodplain.
But floodplain was not in there before.
It's in, it's the, an open drainage channel. It says, "The 100-year, protect building sites from the 100-year in an open drainage channel." And so that, you know, applies to whether it's a FEMA-mapped floodplain, or whether it's mapped in the, by the developer as they go through the development review process.
Any other discussion on Councilman McGinnis's motion to amend? Okay, seeing no further discussion on Councilman McGinnis's motion to amend. Councilman McGinnis, would you like to close on your motion to amend?
No, it's just that I think we need to hold back on putting more regulations and more burden on the landowners.
Seeing that we've had a, moved and seconded and discussion, it's been closed, may we please call the roll on Councilman McGinnis's motion to amend?
Choob?
No.
Washington?
No.
Bowers?
No.
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion lost, 2 to 4.
Okay, now we're back at the main motion on 7B. Is there any other motions to amend on 7B, or any other discussion on item 7B? Seeing none, 7B's been moved and seconded. We had motions, we've had discussion. Seeing no further discussion, may we please call the roll on the main motion for item 7B?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Motion carried, 4-2. Okay, we shall move on to item 7C. Text amendment 22010, request of the Director of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities to amend various sections of Lincoln Municipal Code Title 26 land subdivision to revise the flood and water quality protection measures introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Councilman Beckius, you recognized?
Yes, I would like to introduce motion to amend 2.
Is there a second for Councilman Beckius's motion to amend?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Councilman Beckius, would you like to open on your motion to amend?
Yes, this motion adds additional exemptions in regards to preliminary plats, and when those preliminary plats can be grandfathered to keep new revisions and regulations added after a five-year period of time, when traditionally the, the city may be allowed to ask for a revision of the preliminary plat.
Is there any discussion on Councilman Beckius's motion to amend? Councilman Choob, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Beckius, you said motion to amend number 2 on 22-208?
Yes, sir. On, in our packet, it may be also referred to Beckius' motion to amend number 4.
Thank you.
And then motion to amend number 2. Sorry for the confusion.
No, 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 no. I just want to make, I just want to make sure I'm on the right, I'm reading the right materials. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So just for clarification, on the agenda itself, is that Beckius' motion to amend number 3, 22-220A, motion to amend number 1?
No, sir.
No, okay.
It is Beckius' motion to amend number 4, 22208, motion to amend number 2, an attachment. It is Beckius' motion to amend number 4, 22208, motion to amend number 2, an attachment.
Perfect.
We flipped over, it helps.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
With 40.
Any further discussion on Councilman Beckius's motion to amend? Councilman Shob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm a little confused about the 40 to 80. We looked at it once, we're looking at it again now?
No, sir. What this is doing is, in terms of allowing greater flexibility when it comes to grandfathering plats, I am not introducing motion to amend number 3, otherwise known as motion to amend number 1, because the 40 to 80 issue has already failed previously.
Thank you.
I apologize for the confusion.
No, no, no. As long as we talk like grownups and we work on this, I get it, it'll be good.
Any further, Councilman Washington?
Thank you. I just, I, Councilman Beckius, thank you for this, because as we work through all of these issues, and I got a little flustered with some new amendments, but, new motions, but when we look at the things that the coalition has suggested, and certainly other business owners or developers have suggested, you know, these are the places where there was room to negotiate and room for change, and I appreciate your work in through that with all the parties and the city's staff as well. So thank you.
Councilwoman Ward, you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess in that regard, Councilman Beckius, could you explain where you address the coalition's interest on this amendment? I ask because I was not aware that this amendment addressed, I'm sorry, I didn't know there was a component that was helpful.
Sure. So when Mr. Seacrest addressed us at the December 5th, pre-council meeting, his requests were to add additional language in terms of grandfathering, where preliminary plats were concerned in regards to an increase in density, or a change of land uses that are still classified as residential or classified as commercial. The information found in here does allow for more revision, or excuse me, a, an ease or an additional flexibility when it comes to preliminary plats being grandfathered, specifically in terms of commercial or industrial uses, or tweaks to those uses, in addition to other various amendments, relatively minor amendments, to the preliminary plat.
Could you, may I, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Point that out in this, in this amendment, what line and what page, please, that is addressed?
Sure. I think that you will find them primarily on the top of page 3.
And if I could interject, on page 2, line 7, and line 14, 15, 16.
Correct. So I think on page 3, I'll read it, "However, in the following circumstances, the may, the city may not require a new preliminary plat, 1, when the amendment is for revisions to commercial or industrial uses or floor area, or the revisions contain minor changes to the notes, streets, alleys, or lots, or 2, when the amendment is for minor changes in residential uses."
Okay. Thank you. Councilman McGinnis, what is your reaction to these?
They're improvements.
But don't take it as far as we thought it'd go.
Yeah.
Okay, am I right?
Improvements to the, what was originally put in front of us.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all that I have.
Okay. Any further discussion on Councilman Beckius's motion to amend? Okay, and just to be, to follow through on the goal being crystal clear and orderly, on the agenda where it says 7A, the first one says, in parentheses, Beckius' motion to amend number 3.
7C, sir?
7C, oh, sorry, what did I say?
I think you said 7A.
Oh, 7A, sorry, 7C. Just to be super clear and orderly, that first one, in parentheses, where it says Beckius' motion to amend number 3, we are not voting on that one because that one previously failed. And so we are on for the folks that are following along on our agendas. In parentheses, Beckius' motion to amend number 4, 22-20A, motion to amend number 2, an attachment. Does that make sense to everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, seeing no further discussion on Councilman Beckius's motion to amend, may we please do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 2.
Okay, now we're back to the main motion. Councilman Beckius, you're recognized?
Yes, I would like to move amendment, Beckius' motion to amend number 5, also known as motion to amend number 3. This is getting fun.
Yes.
I apologize.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Councilman Beckius, would you like to open on your motion to amend?
Yes, this motion to amend adds definitions for the open drainage channels, in addition to the overland flow rates. You will see updated language on the motion to amend that defines those two things.
Any discussion on Councilman Beckius's motion to amend? Councilman McGinnis, you're recognized?
I just had a quick question. Page 1, line 17, you're saying buildings adjacent to open drainage channels while in detention facilities must be protected by setting a minimum opening elevation no lower than the required freeboard above the 100-year floodplain, whether they are located in the floodplain or not? Just get back probably to the adjacency issue?
Yes.
Yes.
It would, wouldn't it? Because you're talking, they're in the floodplain or not, and a lot of them, if you're building a house next to the detention cell, you're next to it, but you're not, you're going to be above it. I want to make sure you're above, even if you aren't in the floodplain. Makes sense, okay.
Any further discussion on Councilman Beckius's motion to amend? Councilwoman Washington, you're recognized?
Thank you. Again, it addresses some of what the coalition has asked us. I mean, the Planning Commission looked at adjacent, no, yes, the Planning Commission defined adjacency and had added, made that change. And what they, what the coalition came and asked us for is more clarity and a desire for a definition of open drainways and overflow routes, and that was something that was simple to negotiate, those additional definitions, and clarifying, just some minimum requirements for safety, as Councilman McGinnis just pointed out. So I really appreciate, again, Mr. Beckius, how you've been able to negotiate, maybe not 100% of what the coalition wanted, but some portion, and thank you.
Any further discussion on Councilman Beckius's motion to amend? Councilman McGinnis, you're recognized?
The only question I have is, you said that he discussed this and negotiated on behalf of the Citizens Coalition, but were they involved in these negotiations, or was this just Mr. Beckius with the city and with a couple of other city council people?
So the coalition sent over potential definitions over 2B, I don't know with whom else they may have shared them, but there was not a consensus as to that definition. And so in order to get a definition in here, the definition that we have before us is from Superintendent Zoc.
From who?
Tim.
Tim Zoc.
Oh, Superintendent, yeah, okay.
Sorry, I think that's his title. Superintendent? Okay, Mr. Zoc, we'll go with Mr. Zoc.
Okay.
That one I know is correct.
But they weren't-
Yeah, yours.
Yeah, so they weren't brought forward to the coalition after, after the fact, or, I mean, was it negotiated with, between Mr. Zoc and Superintendent Zoc and the Citizens Coalition?
My understanding is that the coalition and the city tried to get two definitions together and could not.
Okay.
Any further discussion from Councilman McGinnis?
No.
Okay, Councilwoman Ward, you're recognized?
Thank you. I guess to that point, let's just call it the elephant in the room, because, because I'm hearing two different things from Councilwoman Washington and from Councilman McGinnis. And that being, the coalition had a play in this change, and Councilman Beckius is saying that did not happen. So let's, let's be honest about collaboration and what happened and what didn't, and we can have that discussion now, or later, or both, but I don't, it doesn't sound to me like the coalition had input. Mr. Zoc, could you come forward and talk about the communication process you've had? Maybe that will clear it up, because it's easy to say that those discussions happened, but I don't think, Councilman Beckius, that you don't think that happened on this particular issue. So, Tim, could you talk to us about how this language was developed, and who you spoke with, and when, and was it since we delayed this bill?
City staff came up with the definition, and we met with Mr. Seacrest and a couple of members of his team, and discussed this definition.
And was that discussed since the delay, or before the delay? Do you remember by chance?
I think, I can't recall when it was, I apologize.
I love that answer, because, you know, on the movies, they always say, "I can't recall."
We've met with him a number of times, and there's been multiple discussions-
But not recently, you don't think?
I can't remember when it was.
You can't remember, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilman, thank you. I really appreciate it. Does anybody recall, specifically my colleagues, if I may address them? Do you recall? Did it happen or did it not? Or do you not recall?
So-
I mean, that's important to us.
I would like to clarify that when, when we get something in writing, I consider it part of communication. And so receiving in writing from Kent Seacrest what the coalition wants is a communication to me.
Agreed.
I'm not certain that, I think it always needs to be back and forth, back and forth every day, but, you know, I look at what we have in writing, and certainly I think we've given a lot of respect and deference to Mr. Seacrest and the coalition, and hearing what they've had to say and their input. And we balance that up against the years of input we had from other people who have not had the same last minute, and I don't mean to be disrespectful in saying that, but the same access to us in the last six weeks, eight weeks. And so there were a lot of people who had a lot of something to say in the years leading up to this moment, and we've heard again from some of those folks who said, "Well, wait a second, you're giving, it feels like it's open for conversation again when the coalition comes forward. You know, if you don't go too far, we won't make a ruckus, but as you start to bend and shift, we also want to have a voice." And it may be what Mr. Helms was getting at when he asked the point of order. With that said, Mr. Helms and everyone else, we are listening to a number of people talk about this issue, and I appreciate a group having a very clear and prominent spokesperson, but I also really appreciate the fact that dozens and dozens of other people have also had their input into this process. And our job is not to make 150 phone calls to every single person. Our job is to listen to what they have told us, and read what they have sent us, and make some decisions.
First, so yours, Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All I will say to that, and thank you, Councilwoman, is we did receive the coalition's priorities for amendments at our December 9th meeting, but they have not had an opportunity, as you just stated, to participate since that time, and that's been three weeks. And that's, that is the truth. And none, neither has, Councilwoman McGinnis and I had, were not at the table, let alone the community. And sometimes it is our job to make 150 phone calls, to make sure that everybody's being included. That did not happen. So let's be honest about this process, because to me, this is about the process. There was no process. This was the mayor's office, meeting with four of you. That's it. That's it. That's all that happened since the delay. We all know that, so let's just be honest about it. That's where we're at. Let me finish, you got to finish. And that's the truth. And so here we are, and let's be honest. And so I think Councilman Beckius was trying to be honest, and so we don't get to be tired, we don't get to not make the phone calls, we don't get to exclude people, and look at the Nine Mile Prairie process. We drug that out a long time, I drug the council through that. And my, you know, my mantra was win-win, and it was win-win, to the point it could be. And I see people in the audience that stuck with us through that. This is no different, the issue's different, but this process was not fair. We all know that. We all know that, and the public knows that. So let's just be honest, and pick it up where we can, and make this the best that we can. But I don't want to be told that, that people that were, that this means a lot to, got to have part of this. They did not. They didn't, Councilwoman, they did not. Not since the last three weeks passed, that didn't happen. So I just want to make sure that's on the record. So here we are, so we'll make it as best we can. I can count to two, and I know when to fold them, and so that's okay. But you just, we just need to be clear about what happened and what didn't. And thank you, that's all I have.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion on this motion to amend, we've had discussion, it's been closed. Would you like to close on your motion to amend, Councilman Beckius?
No, sir, thank you.
May we please call the roll on this motion to amend?
And this is motion to amend number 2?
It's motion, it's-
Amendment number 3.
3, yes.
May I call a vote?
Yes, please.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Motion carried, 4 to 2.
Okay, now we're back to the main motion. Councilman Beckius, you're recognized?
Yes, I'd like to move motion to amend number 4, otherwise potentially motion to amend number 6, depending on how you look at it.
And for the folks, just to be super clear, for folks that are following along on the agendas, it's in parentheses, it's under 7C, in parentheses, Beckius' motion to amend number 6, 22-20A, motion to amend number 4. The reason why it's written like that is because this is Councilman Beckius's sixth amendment overall, but on this specific item, it's the fourth motion to amend. Is there a second for Councilman Beckius's motion to amend?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Councilman Beckius, would you like to open?
Yes, this motion is to clarify when we have letters of map change, the requirements, this is specifically iterating that these requirements are only applying to residential properties, and then it also frees up the opportu, or creates the opportunity to file surveys with the Register of Deeds office en masse, as opposed to individually.
Council, is there any discussion?
No.
Councilman Shob?
So potentially, this would be a cost savings?
I-
I'm sorry, Mr. Beckius, would you help me understand?
Yes, sir, but I do not want to, any potential cost savings would be small-
Okay.
-in relation to general costs of development.
I understand, I appreciate that, yeah.
Yep.
No, I was thinking big, don't think like, okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, Councilman Beckius, would you like to close on your motion to amend?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we're going to close discussion on that motion to amend, may we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 2.
Okay, now we're back to the main motion. Councilman Beckius, you're recognized?
Yes, I'd like to introduce, if you're following along in your packet, Beckius' motion to amend number 7, 22-208, otherwise known as motion to amend number 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Councilman Beckius, would you like to open?
This language does the same thing as the previous amendment, to clarify letter of map requirements, iterating once again that they're only applying to residential, and then doing the same minor cost-saving measures in terms of surveys. The reason that we're doing this again is because it appears in another section. So that's all I have.
Councilman McGinnis, you're recognized?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. Page 2, line- Yeah. Couple of quick questions. Page two, line 16, well, the whole thing, 14. What's the reason we are having differences between Salt Creek and the other streams? You know?
Um, the, 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 Salt Creek, um, has a better defined, um, uh, flood, uh, um, propensity, whereas the other creeks do not. And Councilwoman Washington, I will freely admit, understands those aspects more than I do.
You, um, well, I'm going to say you're correct about your first statement. Um, you're, you're not necessarily correct about your second.
Yeah, I told you.
But, um, Salt Creek does, um, have a, a greater flood risk, flood rise, um, area, but it, it's, doesn't stand alone in the whole watershed. And so, it's just making, um, Salt Creek itself captures a lot of tribes. And so, I think what we're trying to do is capture the, the relative greater rise in Salt Creek than we, than we have in some of the other smaller streams that fade into Salt Creek.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, um, would you like to close on your motion to amend, Councilwoman Beckus?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, seeing no further discussion, may we please call the roll on Councilwoman Beckus' motion to amend?
Chobe?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero.
Okay, now we'll go back to the main motion. Um, is there any further discussion on the main motion? Councilman McGinnis, you're recognized.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to amend number seven. Um, McGinnis amendment number two, in parentheses.
Oh, number two. Number two.
I believe that would be it.
I have three in front of me. And I have six.
The, the motion to amend number seven is basically, yes.
It's at the bottom.
Oh, it's at the bottom? Okay. And basically, what this is saying, that if you've got a buildable lot adjacent to the floodplain, um, you would still have a lowest, uh, minimum opening elevation can be no lower than the required freeboard above the 100-year elevation. Basically saying you cannot have a building that would be down low, but your lot could be. So we're saying that we don't need to bring the whole lot up above the floodplain to make, have your house be floodproof.
Is that seconded by?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Uh, any extra comments you'd like to add, Councilman McGinnis?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion on Councilman McGinnis' motion to amend? Councilman Chobe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. McGinnis, for this. I'm, I'm re, I'm, the, the blue highlight is a little tough to read, but, and I think we agree on that. It's just the, so, if I build adjacent to the floodplain, and as long as the windows in my basement are above the 100-year flood as it currently stands, or the two-foot freeboard, it's okay. Is that, is it, I think I added a little bit there at the end.
That's what I'm trying to get to, yes. That the whole lot does not have to be brought up. The buildable, we're taking an available lot to a buildable site. The big thing.
Let me remit on the second. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Councilwoman Washington?
All right, I have a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
When, um, this amendment, does it only address residential in existing urban, or is it all residential, or does it also include commercial?
They haven't read the whole, the rest of this amendment. Could I call up somebody and ask?
Absolutely.
Yeah, is...
Who would you like to call, Councilman McGinnis?
Call up Mr. Seacrest, but I'll start with Superintendent Zach.
Thank you. Um, so, the question is, what does adjacent apply to? Um, it applies to any, or go ahead.
Could we start with Title 26? Just Title 26, and now then we're, then we'll talk about the apps, just so everybody can understand what this amendment is for.
What's your question?
Title six pertains to what?
Title 26?
Yes.
That's subdivision ordinance.
Subdivisions. Existing urban area or new?
This applies to both.
Okay.
So this, this section in 2623105 is before the floodplain ordinance section, so it's separate from discussing floodplain, whether it's existing urban or new growth. This is, applies to any development anywhere in the city's jurisdiction.
Your question was also, does this apply to residential and commercial?
So this is only subdivision, so this is residential, and does this?
Subdivision is any development, whether residential, commercial, or industrial?
Could be for one lot, or it could be for a larger parcel that has consolid, I mean, that has multiple buildable lots within the development. Yes?
So it's for the, when we're talking about adjacent, we have that definition for adjacent that we've added with planning commission. I don't have that in front of me, but it applies to those lots that are immediately adjacent to, you know, an area flooding.
Okay.
And it applies to any use, residential, commercial, or industrial.
Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah. Superintendent, does, the way I, I kind of wanted this to read would be that the site itself, and not the whole lot, would need to be above the floodplain, or the building site, or the area where the building will be, the house, or the commercial business. And the whole lot wouldn't need to be, does, in commercial, does that, is that right? Does the whole lot need to be brought up 100 feet, or above the 100-year floodplain at this point at one foot?
Um, if we're talking about adjacent, we're referring to the entire lot. If it's a lot in the floodplain, they can be allowed to have floodplain on that lot and floodproof the structure.
So if I was building a, had 20 acres next to a floodplain, I was building a 40,000-square-foot uh, warehouse building, the whole lot would have to come up out of the floodplain?
It's not in the floodplain today, if we're talking about the adjacent requirement.
But if the, yeah.
It would need to be graded up. That's correct.
It'd be, need to be graded up.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I would note, the language here, this text is referring to minimum opening elevations. Minimum opening elevations are what relate just to a building, so an opening, like a doorway or a window in your building. Um, so changing this to reference minimum opening elevations in, um, in a lot doesn't really coincide, because lots aren't required to have a minimum opening. It's just the building on that lot. Um, so I wanted to clarify that.
Councilman Chobe?
I think, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Mr. Zon was on the track. So what is the current rule on the minimum opening? On, yeah, so if I build a, if I build and I'm going to floodproof my building, do we have rules on that already in the code?
So currently, we're talking about adjacent to the floodplain now. If you're outside the floodplain, um, currently, our standard says that building sites need to be protected, um, from the 100-year flood. And so, it's not clearly defined in the ordinance. How we have regulated it consistently is that any adjacent lot has to be graded, um, the freeboard above the floodplain, so one foot today, as well as we've been requiring lowest floor elevation, so restricting basements. Um, we're saying now, today, we'll allow basements in those buildings that are next to the floodplain, um, as long as the ground is raised. So that if there's a rise in the floodplain, um, we don't want it to encroach onto the lot and to touch the building. Once the floodplain touches the building, then the building's in the floodplain. And if it has a basement, now your lowest floor is eight feet below the floodplain, and your insurance is out the roof.
I followed about, yeah, you lost me a little bit there at the end. Can you do that?
The goal of the ground is so that when, if there's a rise in the floodplain, it doesn't touch the building. If the floodplain touches the building, then that structure's in the floodplain.
Okay. Thank you.
And does the amendment before us right now accomplish that? Or have we accomplished it without this amendment?
We've already accomplished that today with what we are proposing. This removes that requirement so that development built adjacent to the floodplain can be built an inch above the floodplain elevation. And then, if there is a two-inch rise in the floodplain, it would touch, could touch that building, and that building would be in the floodplain.
Thank you.
Any further, uh, discussion or questions? Councilman McGinnis, did you want to invite up Mr. Seacrest?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Um, any further, uh, discussion on, uh, Councilman McGinnis' motion to amend? Okay, seeing none, um, I would please ask for a roll call. Did you want to close on your motion to amend?
Fine.
Okay. Uh, may we please call the roll on Councilman McGinnis' motion to amend?
Chobe?
No.
Washington?
No.
Beckus?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
Motion lost, two to four.
Now we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Councilman McGinnis, you're recognized?
Yeah. Um, motion to amend number eight, McGinnis amendment number three. Um, basically, want to adopt, uh, put the language in that after the city has gone through and done their, the city or the FEMA done their 100-year floodplain map for the subbasins, based off of the NOAA, new NOAA participation rates, then, then the adjacent to the floodplain requirements described above shall no longer apply for this section.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Um, any further discussion on Councilman McGinnis' motion to amend? Okay. Any further words on your motion to amend?
Again, once the federal government can, comes through and tells you where the floodplain is, I don't think that we need to be regulating and, and doing more above and beyond what the government says.
One last call for, uh, just Councilman Chobe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. McGinnis, you and I talked about this a little bit earlier, and I get the idea that you're, what you're talking about. And I, it does concern me a little bit, but, but I'm, so with new floodplain maps, it should absorb any adjacency now. And so the new land would be the new adjacent, and that's what you're concerned about, right?
Correct. I would, um...
The new, it, does, we hold the new adjacent land, we call it adjacent, and is it held to the same standards?
Correct.
Yeah. I, I appreciate, thank you, what you're saying. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate this amendment. Um, having been a federal employee, having worked with FEMA, we didn't very often go back and remove things that we didn't need and that were burdensome for people. And so, um, this would do that, and for that reason and others. But I will be supporting this amendment and appreciate Councilman McGinnis bringing it forward. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Okay, uh, Councilman McGinnis, would you like to close?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Uh, may we please call the roll on this motion to amend?
Beckus?
No.
Uh, Chobe?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
Washington?
No.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion lost, two to four.
As long as I'm on a roll.
Yeah. Councilman McGinnis?
I'll send a amend number nine, uh, which is McGinnis amendment number six. And this is talking about removing the minimum flood corridors from the existing, uh, growth area and, but, to be able to keep those minimum flood corridors, which is now 40, right? 40 acres, as we voted so far. Keep them in the new growth area. And I'd like to call up someone to explain this a little more and where we may end up.
Absolutely. Is that seconded by?
Second.
Councilwoman Ward. Councilman McGinnis, who would you like to invite up?
Would Mr. Seacrest like to come up and explain why we need to keep the minimum flood corridors out of the growth, existing growth area? I'd explain it, but I'd lose it.
Well, given, my name's Kent Seacrest, helping the South, the Stormwater Coalition. Given your vote not to go to 80, and now it's 40, this has become even more important in my mind, because you could have a dwelling, or a building, or a commercial, or rehab in an area, and knock it down, and then staff could identify that gee whiz, there's 40 acres or more coming into this area, and under the minimum corridor, you need to put 90 feet width back in. Well, if your dwelling or the building was in that area, you're not going to be able to put it back in. The point being that in the built environment, it's so much different than complying than it is in the new growth areas. New growth areas, it's fresh. In a built environment situation, we've already got existing structures. The code, their code already requires us, an engineer, to go and identify the 100-year path of water. Even if it's above the first acre, it has to be identified. The code also requires that you have to dedicate an easement. So we have, we'll always get the floodwater through. That is the goal. But this extra 90 feet, when you could be at the top of the hill, could prevent somebody from rebuilding, and it's not in the floodwater zone.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Chobe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did the piping things we voted on earlier address these issues? I don't know the answer. I'm asking someone who does know. Please, help me. I'm sorry, Mr. Seacrest.
The piping helped you live maybe with 40 acres rather than 80 acres. Is that fair? But you've still got 40 acres. So if you're in an existing built area where we've already built, and you knock something down, and there's 40 acres or more above you, the minimum corridor says it's open space. And yet, the code already says you've got to get the 100-year water through there with an easement. So you could block somebody from rebuilding, and it's not because of flooding. The minimum flood corridor is almost a misnomer. It is more of an open space requirement, because we already have to get the 100-year waters through every development.
Councilwoman Washington?
So, based on Mr. Seacrest's answer, I hear that he says that, or, four seconds, I'm not sure that you did say, pardon me, um, that the piping does not address this? So I'm trying to, I, I thought that what we just did...
The piping addresses going from 40 to 100. That wasn't allowed before, and now we can look at piping.
So can we pipe? So my question probably goes to Mr. Zach, because I'd like to know whether or not piping is allowed in town.
It, it, it would be in town under your new passage.
So I, it feels like...
But remember, piping is just another way. You either can have open space for the 100-year water go through, or you could pipe all of it, or you could pipe part of it and still have an open, the 100-year water is being taken care of. It's when you have a built environment situation, you knock something down, and that dwelling or that business wasn't in the floodpath. It was somewhere else in the 90-foot-wide corridor, which is what the corridor width will be now.
Mr. Zach?
Can you repeat your question?
Um, I'm gonna, I'm, I think I'm gonna start with a different set of questions for just a second, because I'm going to try and catch up to this proposal. Um, in the existing built environment, are there constraints on when a building is torn down and replaced if it is not in the floodplain? Let, first, let's make it not in the floodplain, then let's make it adjacent, and then let's make it in the floodplain. Because I want to understand how the water, what this proposal does. I think that Mr. Seacrest... I think that Mr. Seacrest, no, I'm sorry, I think that Councilman McGinnis is offering an amendment to re, move a requirement for minimum flood corridor on in-town lots that are present to the floodplain? It doesn't say adjacent, so I'm trying to figure out where, where this requirement is being removed. I mean, they're trying to...
First off, this is Title 27 subdivision ordinance, so that's where this is located. And then this is the, I believe this is in the definitions. And so, this, we're talking subdivision now, we're not talking zoning, so if someone's house, if they want to rebuild their house, their business, they're falling under the zoning ordinance. And so, this is talking about if someone's coming in with a development and they want to subdivide a piece of land. Second, then, the minimum flood corridor comes into effect currently today, whether it's 150 acres or defined bed and bank, on any open drainage way. And it says you need to preserve a set width and protect that open drainage way. Adjacent is really looking at, okay, if you're building next to it, what do you have to do to protect that building? The minimum flood corridor standard is just saying, if there is this open drainage where, drainage way, it meets the criteria, then it has to be preserved at a set width.
Mm-hmm. And the piping that we just approved a few moments ago, does that address this in some way, or is this a totally different issue?
It does help address this. So, there's two different scenarios where the piping comes into play. One is saying if there is a area that drains 40 acres, let's say the developer decides they would rather pipe it and have the pipe go from 40 to 50 acres. We would allow that provided that they would mitigate that minimum flood corridor that they just impacted. So, let's say it's 100 feet of corridor that they decided to pipe at 90-foot wide, they have to provide that equivalent area of minimum flood corridor somewhere else in their development. So, that's the first one. The second one is saying if there's an open drainage way that in length is less than 300 feet from a closed pipe to a closed pipe, so it goes closed pipe, less than 300 feet of open, back into a closed system, the standard is saying we will not require a minimum corridor in that instance. They do not have to mitigate anything, they can pipe it, the minimum corridor does not, does not have to be applied in that instance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think the confusion arises because we use the term minimum flood corridor, when, like I said, it's a misnomer. We already have to get the 100-year water through every development. Doesn't start at 40 acres, it starts at the very top of the hill, and it's an easement. So, we already got passage for the 100-year water go through. What this is saying is that we want additional open space. And the additional open space in those instances can fall into developable land, which means less buildable lots, which then increases lot prices.
Any further discussion on Councilman McGinnis's motion to amend? Okay, seeing none, would you like to close on your motion to amend?
I think they explained it well.
Okay. Seeing no more discussion, may we please call the roll on Councilman McGinnis's motion to amend?
Shob?
No.
Washington?
No.
Bowers?
No.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Tie 3-3, motion lost.
Now, we're back to the main motion. Is there any discussion or motions on the main motion? Last call for any motions to amend on this main motion?
Mr. Chair, can I just clarify, we're still on 7C?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion on item 7C, may we please call the roll on item 7C?
I'm trying to catch up.
Sorry.
Okay. McGinnis?
No.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Motion carried four to two.
Okay. Before we go on to the next item, I did receive a request to take a break, so we will take a break for approximately 10 minutes. It's 5:34 now, can we be back at 5:45? Council stands in recess until then.
There we go.
Everyone good? Okay, council is going to be back in session. We are on item 7D. We'll continue where we left off.
I'll be calling item 7D. Text amendment 22011 requests that the Director of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities to amend various sections of Lincoln Municipal Code Title 27 zoning to revise the flood and water quality protection measures introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Councilman Beckius?
Yes, I would like to introduce Becky's motion to amend number 922-209, motion to amend number 2.
There a second?
Second.
And just for clarity on folks that are following on the agenda, we are skipping over the first one where it says Beckius, motion to amend number 8, 22-209, motion to amend number 1. And the one we are currently discussing is the one underneath that, which is Beckius, motion to amend number 9, 22-209, motion to amend number 2. It was moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Councilman Beckius, would you like to open up on your motion to amend?
Yes, this is an administrative amendment, uh, administrative amendment mostly, which updates the zoning language in order to remain in compliance with FEMA regs and keep us, keep the city in compliance. My brain's fried.
Councilman McGinnis, you recognized?
Yeah, real quick, sorry. Just answer quickly. The reason we're going from one foot to two feet is because that's what we're voting on now, or is it? If we didn't vote on anything else, we would have to vote on this? If we weren't voting on any drainage criteria, would we have to move this to two feet?
This is, this is upon review of the Nebraska Department of Natural Resources and FEMA. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
No.
Okay, okay. I would have to call Superintendent Zock up. To be quite honest with you, this, these amendments, I understand from my discussions with the coalition, they are acceptable with. Mr. Zock, tell me more.
Yeah.
I didn't spend a whole lot of time on these two amendments because my understanding is that we have agreement in the community.
So this one and the one to come are the same, but two different sections. And this came out of when FEMA and the Nebraska Department of Natural Resources, the DNR, reviewed our proposed changes. Our current ordinance is not in compliant with the state minimum standards today, and so this is to come in compliant with that.
So to, for to Mr. McGinnis, Councilman McGinnis's question, is this having to do with the two-foot free board requirement, the temporary requirement, or is this, is this something that we would have to do regardless? I mean, am I paraphrasing?
We would have to do this regardless. It's written, the free board does apply today, but when we revert back to the one-foot free board, that's the concern that then we would be below the state minimum standard for this specific area of floodplain.
Okay, that makes a little more sense.
And these zone AOs, they're very unique. I don't want to go into detail there because it's very complex.
We don't have any, correct?
We don't have any, but we have to regulate, have that in our ordinance.
So we're required to have a zone?
Have an ordinance that-
An ordinance that has the zoning, even though we do not have that zoning classification.
Thank you.
Okay. Here we go.
So, may I? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you may have said this, Councilman Beckius, so the difference between motion to amend number 2 and motion to amend number 3 is?
The difference is the areas in which they're found in the Lincoln Municipal Code.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on Councilman Beckius's motion to amend? Okay, seeing none. Would you like to close on your motion to amend?
Yes, sir.
May we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Now we're back to the main motion. Councilman Beckius?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Beckius, motion to amend number 1022-dash, or dash, 209, motion to amend number 3.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Councilman Beckius, would you like to open?
Yes, once again, clarifying language, the same clarifying language, updating another section of Lincoln Municipal Code.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, would you like to close?
No, sir.
May we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Okay, now we are back at the main motion for item 7D. Any further discussion on the main motion?
No. Not going to bring it forward, we already kind of brought this one down a step, so.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion on item 7D, may we please call a roll?
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Chobe?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Motion carried 4-2. That concludes item 7D. We shall move on to 7E. Amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 28.01 Regulations for Construction Site Discharges to Revise the Stormwater Quality and Erosion and Sediment Control Measures in Various Sections and by Adding New Sections Number 28.01.065, 28.01128, and 28.01129, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Councilman Beckius?
Yes, I would just like to take the opportunity to thank building and safety. I had requested a reduction from the original proposal in regards to construction site management and fines associated with construction site management. The original proposal had doubled the current reinspection fee, and I'd asked for that reinspection fee to go back to what it is today. They were agreeable to that. I think we all know that regardless of the best efforts of builders in our community, construction itself is a messy process, and I think that what we have in place right now works. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, may we please call the roll on item 7E.
Beckius?
Yes. Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7F, amending various sections of Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 28.03 Regulations for Post-Construction Stormwater Management to Revise the Flood and Water Quality Protection Measures, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Councilman McGinnis?
This really doesn't pertain back to this one, but they're all part of the water amendments and how we went through this drainage criteria and end of time, I guess, for the last few months. And my only thing I really want to say is I, most of these will probably be okay going forward. Most of them will probably work themselves out. There will be some hardship and there will be some cost involved with a lot of this. I don't see where the, there was such a sense of urgency to bring these text amendments forward to protect lives. I don't see any lives being protected in the next three weeks on this. These were all things of future, if you're going to subdivide, which are six, eight, nine weeks out. So the protection end of it and trying to save lives with this urgency is the part that bothered me a little bit, that the urgency behind this wasn't to, to get something to save lives. It kind of became a political deal. It became a political football that had to be passed at a certain time in what's going through now. And that, that's kind of what's got me taken back a lot on this. I probably would have worked my way through most of these. You know, just sitting here talking with councilperson Washington, we've agreed on most of all this. So I just don't like the way the process came down and the way this had to be pushed forward by, I don't know, if it's administration or the mayor's office, who said this had to be done now? And then at the end to be told that we were going to sit down and bring the parties together and come up with a compromise. Well, that didn't happen. And so that's why I was forced into Thursday, after I saw what the compromise was, that most of the citizens' coalition was not put into the compromise, or at least we were going to have a chance to vote on it. And so that's why I had to hurry up and put these amendments together, and I apologize because I think some of them really had some really good deals that we could have gotten done, that maybe have gotten through if we would have had time. But just not having, being part of the, I guess, being in the room where it happened. I mean, we're being told to stay out and you don't, it doesn't matter. And then we're being asked to vote on it. And the process is what's got me mostly upset for the citizens of Lincoln.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also reiterate what Councilman McGinnis has said in terms of the process, that's been my struggle as well, because there hasn't been a process, which is unusual for this council and for our work with the administration. I'm grateful you chaired so that I could participate in the process. I do want to thank Councilman Beckius. You've had put in tireless efforts on this initiative. That, that goes, it's beyond difficult and you don't get thanked very often, and it's just not easy to be in a position that you've been put in, but thank you. I know it's hard. You know, we just haven't done the right thing with this process. And to those of you who said that, and I've had emails saying the process wasn't a good argument, well, for me it is. It is about the process. It is about including everyone before there's a vote, and that did not happen. And it just did not happen. And I'm really disappointed, and it makes me sad that we have to rush through on a project this big for this community when there's so many other people that should have been at the table since we delayed this, and that was the deal. This council said, we'll delay this, but then work together over the next three weeks, and that did not happen, even for council members. We could not get in the door. We were not invited. In fact, we were excluded, and that is not appropriate, and that is not fair, and it's not a good process. It's not a good look for the city or for the city administration and for the mayor's office, and it's too bad. And here we are, and I'm going to say this one more time to my environmental friends who I've heard a lot from. You know, we did have a process during the Nine Mile Prairie process, and Director Marvin and I worked together. It was hard and it was long, but again, we didn't get to be tired. We didn't get to not make those 150 phone calls. We didn't not get to attend other council members' roundtables about the issue. And Councilman Bowers, you had the same with your apprenticeship bill. That was hard, but everybody was at the table if they wanted to be, and in this case, we wanted to be, and even council members were not at the table. Can you imagine being a councilperson and not being able to participate in the last three weeks? It was very, very frustrating. So let's see what else I want to make sure and say. It didn't feel like a good look. It didn't feel like good government. It could have been win-win, and it's not. And I want everybody listening in or watching this later, or everybody in the audience, to know that. As an elected representative, I didn't get to represent, and neither did Councilman McGinnis in the last three weeks. We did not get to do that. We were shut out of the process, and that was unfortunate. It was not good government. It was failed. It was a failed process, and it wasn't, did not feel like democracy to me at all. I regret the council could not see its way out to wait until we've seated our new member, and, you know, we could have waited a few more weeks and to pass this with a six-member council when we have a new, very talented, capable person joining us. There was just no room to even talk about a delay with my peers. It was just, no discussion was possible. And this is huge for this community. I don't know how we're going to pay for it. I guess we'll figure that out. But for six people to decide that when we have seven already seems really irresponsible, and I regret that. And when I've asked people about delays, I just got the "talk to the hand" response, and for that, I'm really sorry that, to experience that. So here we are, and I think we know the outcome. I'm glad we passed some amendments to give us a little bit of wiggle room, but I hope that in the future, that we can have a more transparent process, that people that know what they're doing better than I do can be at the table again, and that we can get everybody represented, because that's our job. It's our job to make sure everybody is included, and when that doesn't happen, it doesn't feel right, and it's not right, and it is a bad, bad look for this city. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to, I want to make my comments very short, but short will still probably mean two minutes. I want to start where, where we all have agreement. I want to start with the fact that everyone who's participated in this process, whether or not they participated in the Salt Creek Resilience Study that started back in the late 20-teens, 2018, I believe, and concluded in 2020, or whether or not you got involved at, in 2021 or 2022, or whether or not you've been paying attention to floodplain issues and our existing regs for even longer than that. I want to thank everyone who's put their voice into this mix, whether or not you're an individual renter, a landowner, property owner in the neighborhoods that are most seriously impacted by this, or whether or not you're a developer or a business owner in those same neighborhoods. We all agree that we need to do something to reduce our flooding risk, and we all agree that becoming a more resilient community when it comes to flooding is important. These are serious issues that we all need to address, and we've all said we will address them. This is one step. We all agree that our climate's changing and that our increased risk for flooding is, is real. And we all know that there is a necessity to update our floodplain maps, and that is happening. And the city has begun the contracting process with FEMA, and for the last two or three weeks, I have been making note of all the public notices that FEMA has issued about the mapping process, inviting public comment for the last three weeks on our FEMA mapping project. I also know that there is a strong desire for all of us to work together in both structural and non-structural solutions regarding flooding, and I expect those conversations to begin almost immediately, if not on the actual structure, on the process. And I know that Councilwoman Ward offered an amendment at the start of this conversation, which I did not vote in favor of, in part because I was reading it at the same time that the vote was taking place, and I wanted to make certain I understood exactly what was happening. But I am committed to making certain that LTU and everyone else comes to the table and sits down to talk about the process for making sure that everyone has a say, a place at the table when we talk about structural solutions. This is a conversation that will take us years as a community to go through because it is a big discussion topic, and it really gets at how we as a community want to help protect each other, how we want to help pay for these shared costs, these big projects. And we've seen how wonderful they can be when we look at Antelope Creek, and we know how much benefit, other benefit besides flood protection that we get when we look at Holmes Lake. But neither one of those solutions were an overnight solution. They took years to discuss and years to fund, and I expect that we will all be working diligently to discuss this and to find the funding to do this. And I really hope that no one feels that because this was not perfection, that they should stop participating. I hope it encourages people to say, because this wasn't perfection.
Chobe?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, excuse me, 5-1.
Okay, and I will now pass over the gavel back to Chair Ward. And I will now pass over the gavel back to Chair Ward.
Thank you. Thank you very much for presiding.
We've got a lot of work to do.
Clerk, we are ready to move on to item 7G.
Item 7G, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Pershing Block Phase One redevelopment project in the amount not to exceed $2,327,452, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Schob. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six-zero. Item 7H, approving amendment number one to construction and ground lease agreement for Lincoln Children's Zoo between the City of Lincoln Children's Zoo to construct additional parking lot, introduced by McGinnis.
Introduced by McGinnis? So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six-zero. Item 7I, Annexation 22003, Application of Tribudo LLC to Annex Approximately 109.79 Acres More or Less in Property Generally Located at North Seventeenth Street and Arbor Road, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Yes, Councilman McGinnis.
Yes, I do. Part of this property that we're annexing now is actually in a conservation wetlands agreement. So it won't be developed, and there probably shouldn't be much value to it. I think the owner being annexed was worried that the value will increase a lot, so he will have to start paying more taxes as being inside the city and paying city taxes on this. I don't see that. It's not an issue we can take up. It's an issue for the assessor to put a value on that ground concert with what it's being used as or what the restrictions are on it currently. So I think we'll be fine to keep moving this forward. Otherwise, we would have a donut in, in the middle of this property.
Any other, yes, Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was the warehouse conversation, right?
And the ground next to it.
And the ground next to it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for that clarification.
Good to remember that. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six-zero. Item 7J, Change of Zone 22005, Application of Tribudo LLC to change from AG Agricultural District to I-2 Industrial Park District on property generally located at North Seventeenth Street and Arbor Road, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved. Seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six-zero. Item 7K, approving the conditional zoning and annexation agreement between the City and Lancaster Logistics Hub LLC to the property, excuse me, for the property generally located adjacent to the south side of Arbor Road from North Sixty-third to North Sixty-eighth Street, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six-zero. Item 7L, approving the Lincoln Logistics Redevelopment Agreement between the City and Lancaster Logistics Hub LLC, the business has Lincoln Logistics Hub relating to the redevelopment of property generally located adjacent to the south side of Arbor Road from North Sixty-third to North Sixty-eighth Street, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six-zero. Item 7M, amending the Fiscal Year 2223 CIP to authorize an appropriate $13,492,680 in tax increment financing for the Lincoln Logistics Redevelopment Project, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six-zero. Item 7N, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Lincoln Logistics Redevelopment Project in amount not to exceed $13,492,680, introduced by?
So moved.
Yes.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Seconded by Beckius. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-zero.
Six-zero.
Oh, excuse me, six-zero. I was checking to see if anybody was awake, too.
Next meeting.
That changes in a second.
Thank you.
Thank goodness.
That concludes our ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. Section eight is resolution's first reading, items 8A through 8H. Section nine is our ordinance's first reading and related resolutions, our items 9A through 9F. Section 10 is our pending list, items 10A through 10C. And next, we will have our swearing-in of our new councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Elect. We're not.
No. No. We're not adjourned.
We're not adjourned. Excuse me?
Oh, we have.
I got this.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Elect, or appointee, please come forward. Yes. Well, we have voted. Yes. With Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Yes, we will need picture-perfect setup.
Nope, you're fine. And I think the microphone.
The microphone, yeah.
The microphone should pick up. Okay. If you can please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Michelle Suarez.
I, Michelle Suarez.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
and that I will faithfully and impartially.
and I will faithfully and impartially.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office of city councilmember.
of the office of city councilmember.
in and for Lincoln, Nebraska.
in and for Lincoln, Nebraska.
according to law.
according to law.
and to the best of my ability.
and to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, she has it on already. Perfect.
Have a seat up here while adjourn. If you would like. Welcome.
It's your first one, so it's easy.
Yes. 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 You can just push your mic on.
It is now. Okay, there, now it's on. Well, thank you very much. It's just an honor to join this great group. It was an interesting meeting, a lot of heavy, complex projects and to think about and to vote on. And so I just really appreciate the opportunity to join you. Thank you. I care deeply about this community. I've lived here for over 40 years. I lived in the same house in District Three for 30 years. Came down to university from Scottsbluff to attend the university. Came down from Scottsbluff to Lincoln to attend the university. My husband, John, who's here with me, and my daughters Carly and Erica have enjoyed a wonderful life in Lincoln, and so that's what I want for all residents. Just a little bit of background, very quickly. My five brothers and sisters and I were raised lovingly by amazing parents in about a 500-square-foot home in Scottsbluff, Nebraska. So my siblings and I sometimes would have disagreements, and we, or else we might just sit around philosophizing as elementary kids, we really did. And my brother or sister would ask, well, whose side are you on, Michelle? Or they would share their side.